Supervisor Pysko, please lead us in.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Looking to see if any board members or staff have any extra items today.
We have no extra items.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have our consent agenda. Any board members wish to pull items from the consent?
I'd like to pull 5.8.
5.8. Thank you for that. Let's open it up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to open or pull any consent items from the agenda? See no one in the chambers and no hands up in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Chair Sabatier will move to approve consent to agenda items 5.1 through 5.7, 5.9 through 5.24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to public input. This is for anything related to Lake County and the Board of Supervisors and not on the agenda today. You have three minutes. Please come on up and express yourself. See no one getting up and no hands. Oh, please come on up.
Good morning. I don't know quite what's compelled me to come here this morning other than just coming here because of something that was signed about 12 years ago by your people behind you, you know, what they were thinking and feeling before you. And it was called the proclamation of peace, the summer proclamation of peace. And I'm nervous. Good morning. Thank you for the open space. What it was to bring to our county at the time was to come together as, to consolidate, to come together, to understand what agencies were doing what and how we were going to make Lake County different. It was to go from, what was it, June 12th to September 21st or something. And what it was to do was to bring human understanding to us. I'd like to just read a couple of these pieces here that was signed by the board. Practical proven tools and resources for cultivating inner peace and promoting harmonious relationships in our family, school, communities, the environment, and the world at large. Further cultural development of Lake County into an artist and writer's colony. Exemplary stories of reconciliation and hope and to demonstrate the positive potential of Lake County residents using their creative imagination to shape their own world. I am nervous.
I'm doing good.
Positively according to the consensus of multiple inventive minds. Enhancement and expansion of Lake County's natural beauty. Emergent businesses prosperity paired with the summer of peace reaches beyond economic concerns toward a new common vision and practice of even better products and services, better marketing and development. Hosted by Lake County Partners and active organizations regarding the health and well-being of all individuals and groups through the cooperative and collaborative projects by individuals, businesses, public and private agencies, professionals, workers, military, retired military, churches, civic, and service organizations, the courts, probation, and law enforcement. This was set to just claim what we can all do together. And I believe, I trust that this can still be in the forefront of our minds because we all exist here together. And it's not all just about money. As we all know, I see you in different places talking. I haven't seen Mr. Green much, but I've seen a lot of you talk about what's in your hearts.
If we can please finish the comment.
So I would like to know if there's any questions that you have about the summer of a peace and how you were going to maybe just rethink it in your own minds this summer.
Thank you very much. And we can't have a back and forth during public comment. And please provide your name.
My name is Francis. Francis Ford. I live in Kelseyville, California.
Francis from Kelseyville. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Thank you for reminding us. Any other comment from the public? Okay, I see no further hands up. Let's go ahead and close public input. Move on to pet of the week. And we do have a pet of the week. Welcome Officer Murray.
Good morning. I'm Officer Murray with the Lake County Animal Care and Control. And today I have with me Ryder. He's a two-year-old red healer. And he is a ball of energy. He is a very, 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 very sweet boy. All he wants to do is give kisses and be in your lap 24/7. He would do really well in any kind of household, but with his energy level, I definitely think something with land or a high-energy household would probably be best. Come on. So if you would like to come and meet this sweet, sweet boy or any of our other animals, you can come down to 4949 Hellbush Drive or give us a call at 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good luck Ryder. All right, we're going to move on to our 9:05 AM item. Presentation of proclamation commending Scott DeLeon for his dedication and service to the County of Lake. And Supervisor Green will read the proclamation. I think that family is supposed to come up with the individual. I think it's part of protocol.
You don't want to come up here either, so let's make it a party anyway. Come on.
All the way.
In for a penny, in for a pound, right? Mr. DeLeon. Family. A proclamation commending Mr. Scott DeLeon for his dedication and service to the County of Lake. Whereas nearly 25 total years of dedicated and inspiring service, who wrote this? Okay, inspiring service with the County of Lake and four decades of rich and valuable community and professional contributions to Lake County's communities, Scott DeLeon will retire June 28, 2024. And whereas Scott gained early experience as part of the Ruzika Associate Summer Survey Crew and assumed a County of Lake role as an Engineering Tech III shortly after graduating from Chico State University in 1987. And whereas he additionally earned, I hear oohs in the audience, that's unusual. It's a long resume. Whereas he additionally earned his Civil Engineering License in 1991 and was recognized with numerous Board of Supervisors commendations and multiple promotions in the first decade of his career for his outstanding service to the community. And whereas Scott is a proud husband of nearly 30 years to his wife Melody, a highly engaged and loving father to their two sons, Joseph and Max, and has been a supportive and dedicated teacher and coach to Lake County youth, founding the Westshore Youth Basketball League with Melody in 2007, and leading the basketball team at his alma mater, Clear Lake High School, to the greatest successes in the school's history while developing multiple athletes who went on to play high-level college sports. And whereas, following a decade of successful work in the private sector, including management of his own engineering firm, he returned to county services as Water Resources Director in May 2010 and has served in director-level roles for the full intervening period, bringing positive and team-focused leadership during times of normal operations, developing numerous staff that have become valued County of Lake leaders, and critically contributing to county emergency response and recovery efforts. And whereas in 2015, Scott was honored alongside Congressman Mike Thompson for outstanding leadership in protecting America's environment and economy by reducing invasive species-related risk through Lake County's innovative quagga and zebra muscle program, earning the outstanding achievement by a local government agency award. And whereas in 2022, he was recognized as the County Engineer Association of California's Engineer of the Year, culminating decades of contributions to CEAC. And whereas Scott has made diverse and dynamic career-long contributions to his home community, providing an example for all Lake County youth of what can be achieved by leveraging experiences gained through professional opportunities and training for public service. We're almost there. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, Scott DeLeon, this man right here, is hereby commended for his dedication, passion, and tireless efforts to uplift Lake County's communities and the County of Lake organization, and we wish him good health and rich and enduring happiness during his retirement. Passed and adopted this 18th day of June 2024. That's right. I know Scott is a man of few words, but you get him wound up. Let's see how it goes.
Now, this is going to be few words. So Kathy, my sister-in-law, is here. Thank you Kathy for being here. Happy to share this with my wife Melody. Truth of matter is, I don't, none of this gets accomplished without her. So she's been my greatest supporter. She's also been my greatest critic and has helped me become the person who I am today. So thank you. And looking forward to the next chapter. So thank you, Board and Administration, for this. That's greatly appreciated. I'll tell you, I heard an ooh in 1987. I graduated from Chico State and started here. And it seems like it was just yesterday, but my goodness, that's been a long time. And seen a lot of really cool changes, seen a lot of really cool things. When we first started here, we did plans by drafting them by hand with a pen and Mylar. And now, now everything's done by computer. And it's just, it's been remarkable. Remember when we got our first computer? I know that may sound hard to believe, but we didn't have computers when I started here. And you wanted to type them, or you wanted a memo or something to go to the board, you handwrote it, and you gave it to somebody to type. And what amazing technology we have today versus, again, it doesn't seem like it was that long ago. Thank you to all of you who have come here today, taken time out of your day to be here. I appreciate it. And all I can say is thanks. Appreciate it.
Board members, I know you aren't going to let them off easy. So before the photo op, let's hear from the board.
Scott, I'll start out with your flaw. You don't know how to say no. I think that you're always up for the challenge. And I think that exhibits what kind of player you are in the team. How many departments did you end up taking over eventually? Because you said yes, because the answer was never no. You always wanted to help to make Lake County be a better place. I appreciated the fact that you and I can have a good, healthy relationship where I can walk up in your office and say, you're mad at me, let's talk. And that we would have good conversations and we would walk away in a much better place. You and I made a great connection at one point. Our sons are very similar. And I know that I walked away from that office that day. I don't think that our relationship will ever be the same since then. So I look forward to continuing that friendship outside of just work. I'll stop giving you crap now. And definitely well-deserved. Thank you for your service to the community. And we look forward to seeing how happy you are while you're fishing.
Scott, just wanted to, you know, give you your best on your retirement. I know that you're, it's well-deserved, especially working with me in the town halls that I represent and all of the issues. And thank you for coming to them and being there and explaining why things were happening the way it was. And I always did my best to support you, give you a heads up, make sure you knew what was going on, and definitely not throw you under the bus, you know. So again, just your hard work, your knowledge, at times I could just pick up the phone or email and you knew exactly what was going on because of the historical knowledge as well. And so not only were you technically savvy about that subject, you also just knew the history of it. So it made it a lot more, I guess, I wouldn't say convenient, but just more auspicious for all of us to be able to just be in touch with you on some of these things. So it's going to be something we'll have to fill some shoes with, you know. But you really deserve this. I know that sometimes it gets to you and you're just like, I could tell, like you're, well, here's another thing. Here's another day, you know. And so I commend you as a good leader and you will be dearly missed, but then it's well-deserved. So enjoy.
So as I was reviewing the budget book, I just, I'm amazed at how many places your fingers are in that book and in the county as a whole. You've touched so many projects and departments and communities over the years. And I'm just so deeply appreciative of your service, both of you. I see you, Melody, out at all the events too. And I, I just, I love the relationship that we've built too and the conversations that we've had. I'm so happy for you to be able to enjoy your retirement, have those campfires and guitar singing sessions and fishing. And he did promise, by the way, we can auction off a fishing tour with RCRC. We could put that in our.
Really?
Yes, he said that.
I'll hold you to that, I need it.
Yeah, that's happening. That's like your last, gonna be your last annual service project for us. So appreciate that, Scott, and wishing you both so much, so much joy and adventure in your retirement. Thank you.
I just want to say thanks for your service, Scott. It's been a pleasure to serve with you here on the board. Always had an open-door policy on questions or things that were going on in my district and throughout the county. So, you know, but I really enjoyed going and watching you coach. You're a leader. You know, you're able to lead young men. Also, your team that you have here at the county, I really appreciated that. And, you know, obviously we have that together, just watching youth grow and go from there and be successful in life, come back and work here in the county or do whatever they're going to do. So I appreciated every conversation we had, whether it was about a project in my district or just things that you guys were doing during the worst storms that we've seen here in the county, you know, the way that you led the team. So I appreciate that. Enjoy the retirement, man. Catch the hell out of those fish out there, man. All right, thank you. And thank you very much for allowing him to do this for all these years, so.
Scott, I want to thank you. I was the rookie supervisor. I think one of our first conversations I settled in your office, and you got that patient yet pained look, like, oh, what's this guy want? And we got through that first awkward part, and then you hit a second gear where it's like, okay, open up a little bit. We're opening up and sharing a little bit. I want to highlight, you are kind of a renaissance man. Public Works, Water Resources, CDD was in there for a while. The faith this board put in you then and puts in you now, continuing today as your retirement approaches, just speaks for itself. You know, if we need a job that needs to be done and done well, we're going to turn to you. I oohed at the 1987 and the no computers too. Now I have this picture of you with a slide rule in some classroom, doing engineering math. One thing I want to highlight though is it wasn't an intuitive role necessarily, but as an avid bass fisherman and just a sports enthusiast, you were as the head of Water Resources, basically the first county responder to the Clear Lake hitch emergency that we're now navigating. And I think your able leadership of Water Resources and Public Works during that initial period is going to pay dividends. I think the next budget and our ongoing hitch response will be some proof of that. So, you know, we rise to the times as they present themselves, and you have risen to every challenge that I've seen. And I appreciate it so much. I am going to razz you later tonight, but one of the nicest things in the last meeting we had is you said in your retirement, you were going to be able to get to know Melody again. And I think that is so sweet. So to give her honor and acknowledgement here today and the private acknowledgement you shared, it's just, you're a sweet, wonderful man. And I know you're embarrassed to hear that, but.
No, 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 no. Let's, I want to make sure that there's some public here. There's some staff members, some colleagues that probably want to embarrass Scott a little bit longer. So please come on up to the podium. I'm sorry. Please come on up to the podium, one at a time.
I've been around a long time. I remember when you took over two other departments. But what really impressed me was your attitude when all your workers got their two or three year certificate. You were in here and you were so gunghol, like a coach or a father. You really, the road crew, everybody, you are proud of them. And I really was impressed with that. You're a cheerleader for all of your staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning supervisors. Scott, Melanie.
Good morning.
I'm Brad with Congressman Thompson's office. And I have the honor of presenting something to you that Mike presented to his colleagues on the House floor last Thursday. But before I read some of this, I just want to make two comments that Mike said to tell you. One, he's sorry he couldn't be here today. And two, that he too is a graduate of Chico State. And he goes around bragging that it is the Harvard of the California State University system. So don't forget that. Just to read a couple of paragraphs in this that he shared with his colleagues because so much of what was said in the board proclamation is also said in here. But he shared, he said, "Mr. Speaker, I rise today to honor Scott DeLeon and esteemed member of our community." Mr. DeLeon is being honored for his over 23 years of dedicated service with the County of Lake and his four decades of contributions to our county. And then it goes through your life and your accomplishments. And he goes, "Mr. DeLeon is the proud husband of nearly 30 years to his wife Melody and the father of two sons, Joseph and Max. Mr. Speaker and colleagues, we thank Mr. DeLeon for his dedicated service to our community. His passion, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the service have left an indelible mark on all of us. Therefore, it is fitting and proper that we honor you with this resolution here today." And it's signed by Mike. And it'll be permanently put in the House Record. There you go. Awesome. Thank you.
So I've been very fortunate. I'm Glenn March. Scott's leaving and I'm going to try to fill his shoes. So it's been really great getting to know Scott. And this week I've had my staff meetings. And this week, I've had my staff meetings and having gotten the pleasure of getting to know Scott over the last two weeks. I told my staff that we need to be more like Scott, and we need to cherish our family, our friends, our family, and we need to put work in perspective with that. And Scott has done it so well. You know, I remind our staff they need to be more like Scott. So that's all I wanted to add, and it's been great.
Thank you, Glenn.
I'd like to apologize in advance for anything I might offend, say to offend somebody.
We're going to need your name first. For the record.
It's a shame you don't have one of your own. Rob Brown, Kelseyville. DeLeon is one of the smartest, kindest, generous, most personable, hardworking people I've ever met, but we're not here to talk about Melody. So I'll get into Scott. And by the way, I see the flags on the dais there, and I'm glad you were able to make good use of some of Scott's old ties. Jesus, just a joke. So just like you, the you're mad at me, you know, I'll come up and talk, no, it was you, you that said that, right? You're mad at me, you want to talk or whatever. Well, I had that, too. It was, ended up, you're mad at me, now is probably not a good time. So I tried to avoid that, but we worked a long time together. And that rookie and that pained and patient look that you got also came when you're here 20 years. So you get that look from him once in a while at that point, too. I'm fortunate enough to know Scott since those early days in the 80s, when he was a first county employee, if he remembers this or not, but we were building the county park in Kelseyville, right across from the pizza parlor there. And he was there to babysit an equally young equipment operator with junky old tractors that, we were there at 6:00 in the morning and we'd have to knock off at 10:00 because it was so hot, the tractors couldn't operate until we'd come back again at 6:00 at night and work until dark. And I remember those days, and that's when I first met Scott, and I just really liked him then and like him even more now. I've always appreciated working with Scott, not just as a coach, watching him as a coach to our youth and encouraging his employees to be coaches and that community involvement, but the coaching that he actually provided to his employees. He, Scott, is the type of person, always has been the type of person, that didn't pretend to know everything, but he was proud to be able to point you to the person that did know where the answer was and then give that person the credit that they deserve for having that information and having that knowledge. I see, I see a crew here today that it's unbelievable. It doesn't match anywhere. I mean, it's just, they're great people, and some of these are generational. He's actually cultivated and brought them up. I see Jimmy here, Chris Prather's not here, but he's one of those examples of, they started out at the bottom, they came up, and he, with his mentorship and his leadership, and that's what a good leader does. They bring up people, they're not afraid to have them know more about a subject than what they know. And that's what, I see Lars, I see Scott, I see all these people that he encouraged to not just be good leaders, but then go off and be department heads themselves. And so he's been, some of his employees actually were able to go on to Caltrans and work less and make more. But common sense, that's the one thing that, you can't train that, and he always had that. He's always come up with solutions, engineers do that, that type of thing anyway, but Scott was easy to talk to and he was easy, he listened to things. When the fires happened, we talked about these departments that came in, that were department heads left, and he took over and worked interim, sometimes almost permanent. The fires, when we had these fires, starting with the Valley Fire, Scott was one of the first ones to step up and say, what do you need me to do? It didn't make, it hadn't, sometimes it had absolutely nothing to do with his county skill or his training or his job. It didn't make any difference at all what it was. He was willing to do it and do it well. The benefit zones that you tolerated and helped me with, through that, we were able to accomplish a lot, including, we were able to pave more roads with the help of the community and your leadership on that than every other district combined. And it was just because we got the public to buy into it, and it worked out really well. I know I could go on for a long time, because there has been decades of respect and admiration for both of you, the hard work that both of you have done. I talked to you the other day, this doesn't get accomplished with that, just you by yourself or your staff, it's your family, and I'm glad you get to spend time with me, get them back. Thank you for giving us Scott. Thank you for letting us have him for all these years, all these decades. I thought you had finally accomplished everything there was. When I saw Joan get up, I thought she was going to sing you a little song, but that didn't happen, so you still have not made it.
Anyone else wish to make a comment?
I'm already crying, so forgive me. If, look this way. So if Scott is a man of few words, I'm a man of much less words, but also a man of a lot of tears, so forgive me. So Scott was my coach in more than one way. He coached me in football, coached me in basketball. I went on and coincidentally enough, went into the same career field he did, through different paths. I did not go to the Harvard of the CSU system, but I did go into civil engineering, and eventually I would find my way back here. And eventually, working for Scott and for Melody. It was the, it was the three of us in the office. I've learned a lot from Scott, both what to do, what not to do, and I think there's, you can learn in both ways, but I have learned much more about what to do. One thing he obviously did not teach me is how to control your emotions. So maybe we need to back up a bit. But Scott, Scott has been a wonderful leader, wonderful mentor. I'm going to miss, miss the times when we would just reach out and say, hey, listen, our departments are very similar, and what can I, how can I deal with this? What are you going through in this, in this respect? He's, he is a renaissance man. He's also a man of, he's confident. He knows what it takes to get stuff done, and I really respect that about you, Scott. Melody and Scott and I in the office, I mean, those are some great times. I were good friends, look forward to your future, because you will enjoy it. The words about Melody were wonderful. I just, I admire that very much. And so before I say anymore, with a lot of tears, I'll end it with just a grateful heart of thank you for coaching, for private sector mentorship, for public center mentorship, and for friendship. So thank you both very much.
And I do not see anyone else getting up. I will make one last comment before we take a picture. There was one last conversation, not last conversation, but a conversation that I know I brought home, because I, the simplicity of your philosophy is something that I will definitely hold on to, and I want to share with the public and those in here. You were talking about when you coached and students weren't happy with what you did as a coach, and you just broke it down as simple as, if you don't like it, do better. And then you'll get the time that you want to play out there, you'll get the position that you want to play out there. And you and I had a little situation, and you said, you know what, Bruno, I need to do better. And I think that's a philosophy we should all have. The results aren't always someone else that controls it. We get to have some control over the results, and we can all try to do better to get the results that we want. And I know that's something that I will always remember from our conversations we've had. It's a great philosophy, so thank you for sharing that with me. Let's do a photo op. I'm going to move on to item 6.4, our 9:10 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing June 19, 2024 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, A Day of Observance. And Vice Chair Crandall will do this one.
All right. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and do this proclamation. Thank you for coming up. And so we will go ahead and conduct this proclamation recognizing June 19, 2024 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, A Day of Observance. Whereas on June 19, each year, we look back to this day in 1865, on which Union General Gordon Granger led troops into Galveston, Texas to announce the end of the Civil War and the insidious institution of slavery. Thousands of enslaved people in Texas amongst the last to learn of the independence tasted hard-worn, hard-won freedom for the first time. And whereas, over the next several decades, African Americans who journeyed out of the South seeking better lives brought Juneteenth celebrations with them. The thousands who settled in California, especially in Los Angeles and the San Francisco Bay Area, taught our state that America's struggle for independence did not end in 1776 or 1865, but continues to this day. And whereas, take time to reflect on the ongoing case or cause of freedom for Black Americans, remembering that through General Granger's announcement in 1865 called for absolute equality. That vision was and remains far from complete. And whereas, Juneteenth is a profoundly significant American celebration of freedom symbolizing the end of oppressive area, era of slavery in the United States. And whereas, let us celebrate how far we have come and take stock of how far we must go and honor all those who have lived and died in pursuit of a more perfect union. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize June 19, 2024 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, A Day of Observance. Passed and adopted this 18th day of June 2024. Signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Bruno Sabatier.
First of all, I want to thank Board of Supervisors for the recognition, and pretty well, much everything in the proclamation stole some of my thunder, but nevertheless, we still have a long way to go, because the rights of African Americans and people of color across this nation is under assault. And women's right to choose, our voting rights, jury mandating, and Jim Crow. Jim Crow is still alive and well. He only wears suits and robes now. So we all have to be conscious of the things that we have to deal with in this country, and we all have to work together for a better place to live for our kids and our families. Through doing that, it takes courage. And hopefully, County of Lake will continue being a partner in that concept of courage to do the right thing, and that's what's political expedient. Thank you very much. Oh, Rick Mayo, resident of Lake County, president and founder of the local NAACP here in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick, for being here. This is, I believe, our third year, is it, that we're celebrating this? And really appreciate that we do this every single year. Every time that we get to celebrate the additions of freedoms that have slowly evolved in our country, whether it be Black History Month, whether it be Pride Month, whether it be Juneteenth, all of those accumulate to the freedoms that we have currently today, and we shouldn't forget that we came from somewhere else. And there's still hardship to be won, and we're in this together. So thank you so much for being here, and appreciate having this proclamation today. Take a picture.
That's it? No public comment?
Any public comment?
Oh, yeah.
Apologize, I jumped pictures. Let's do picture.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, wait, one second. Are you coming for this?
She said no.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Perfect fix.
Next proclamation, our 9:13 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Commending Captain Billy Richard Inman Jr. for his 32 years of service protecting and serving the residents of Lake County. And I believe we have Ms. Inman. I thought we did.
Come on. Thank you. Today's proclamation commending Captain Billy Richard Inman Jr. for his 32 years of service protecting and serving the residents of Lake County. Whereas Billy Inman Jr. grew up in Covelo and Corning prior to moving to Lake County. And whereas, in 1985, he married his high school sweetheart, Pam, and started their family in 1986, and their first born, Jessica. And whereas Billy began his firefighting career as a seasonal firefighter for South Lake County Fire in 1992. And whereas, he dedicated himself to his community as a volunteer firefighter for the Lakeshore Fire Department Volunteer Association, climbing the ranks to volunteer captain. And whereas Billy was eventually hired by the Lake County Fire Protection District as a firefighter and continued his education by taking various fire science courses and becoming a firefighter emergency medical technician. And whereas, in 2008, he promoted to fire captain of the Lake County Fire Protection District. And whereas Billy set a high bar to follow as a mentor to colleagues and his community. And whereas, he was instrumental in protecting the township of Lower Lake during the Clayton Fire in 2016 and the areas threatened by the Sulfur Fire in 2017. Through his heroic and decisive actions, Captain Inman and his team saved many more homes from being damaged and destroyed on those tragic days, including the Lower Lake Schoolhouse. And whereas Billy has shown an immense dedication and passion for both his biological and fire families. And whereas Billy is retiring And whereas Billy is retiring from the Lake County Fire Protection District in July 2024, leaving behind a legacy of public service and courage that defines him as an individual and the badge he has worn so proudly. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors commend Billy Richard Inman Jr. For His 32 Years of Service Protecting and Serving the Residents of Lake County. His extraordinary service to this community and heroic actions that have impacted lives will never be forgotten, and we wish him the best in his retirement. Passed and adopted on the 18th day of June 2024 and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Bruno Sabatier.
My name's Liberty Francis, and I just want to thank Bill for his many, many years of service and mentorship to my very own son, who has been with Lake County Fire Protection for five years. So, thank you.
So Chief Sepeda had reached out asking for a proclamation due to the retirement happening. The proclamation will be provided to Captain Billy Inman upon his retirement in July. And so really happy that we're able to do that and recognize, especially in light of what we just talked about this morning, all the fires that are already happening around us, just the need and the recognition of the first responders in our community. And Captain Billy Inman is definitely one to be recognized. Okay, we're gonna, I know that we're only at 9:15 on our agenda, and it's also 9:50. I did get a request for a break, so let's go ahead and there's been a request for a break, so I'm gonna go ahead and take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene at 9:56. And let's go ahead and reconvene. Thank you for your patience. We are going to take up our 9:15 a.m. 6.6 item. Consideration of the following appointments to the Blue Ribbon Committee for the rehabilitation of Clear Lake. And here we have a offer for a primary and a alternate. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, let's open it up for the public. Any comments on this item? Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in Zoom and no one getting up in the chamber, so bringing it back to the board for action.
If I'm reading the record. Move to appoint Keith Ahart to serve on the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Rehabilitation of Clear Lake and designate Scott Horning as the alternate effective July 1, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That was easy. 6.7, 9:20 a.m. item. We'll have our Health Services team come up. Consideration of Ordinance to Regulate Smoking and Commercial Tobacco Use in Efforts to Address the Health Risk of Second and Third-Hand Smoke to the Community. There's room for you up here. It's not a splash zone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Pleased to be here today to present to you guys the Smoke-Free Ordinance Proposal. My understanding is that this has been in the works for the last few years. And I want to personally thank Liberty Francis for her time and effort in this and all the support that she's gathered, all the data that she's gathered. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to her for a presentation to you guys.
Thank you all for welcoming us back. We were here last year presenting on multiple issues around tobacco-related illness and options that we could address those tobacco-related issues in our community with policy. And I want to thank you for asking us to bring this back to the table. Okay, so I just have a few things to go over before you guys have your turn to ask questions. So the risks of secondhand smoke and/or aerosol. Just to define that, vape or e-cigarette is not considered smoke, it's actually aerosol. Tobacco use continues to be the number one cause of preventable death and disease and disability. And in California, commercial tobacco is killing notably 40,000 people each year, which equates to about 110 people a day. Secondhand smoke is especially harmful to children and those folks that are already compromised with other illnesses. It can result in respiratory tract infections, air infections, cause asthma flares, hospitalizations, and more. Secondhand smoke is responsible for an estimated 430 sudden infant deaths, SIDS, in the U.S. Studies also show that exposure to secondhand smoke increased the risk of cancer and heart disease by 25 to 30%. The Surgeon General has declared that there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Even short exposures can cause health risks. So the 2024 American Lung Association Grade Report Card was just recently published. And again, we're looking at Fs in most of our jurisdictions in Lake County with the exception of the smoke-free area in Clear Lake where they received an A. Lakeport is at a D due to the policy that was established previously at the fairgrounds to go smoke-free. And the Lakeport Unincorporated is sitting at an F. So commercial tobacco costs. Annual costs of smoking is about $18 billion, which includes an estimated $9.8 billion for healthcare costs, $1.4 billion in loss of productivity from illness, and $3.8 billion costs our state Medi-Cal program for illnesses related to tobacco use. Commercial tobacco costs to the environment. Cigarette butts are still the number one trash picked up in roadsides and beaches. And California cities spend more than $41 million yearly on cleaning up tobacco product waste. So smoke-free workplaces in Lake County, I just wanted to share that in June 24th of 2014, the Lake County Health Services adopted a smoke-free department policy, and it was approved by resolution of your board. And at that time, they posted signs on the gates, in the parking areas, on our gazebos that staff and community members use, letting them know that that is a smoke-free environment. And they added it to their policy and procedure manual, and staff that are newly hired are informed that that campus is smoke-free. Following that year, 2015, Sutter Lakeside Hospital worked, they planned a smoke-free campus, Lake County Tribal Health, as well as Woodland Community College, and then, as I mentioned previous, the fairgrounds. The only way to eliminate secondhand smoke exposure is to prohibit smoking and vaping near-air intakes, entryways, enclosed spaces, and outdoor areas which others gather. Smoke-free policies can improve human health, reduce healthcare costs for those exposed to secondhand smoke, reduce fire risk because of the littered tobacco products that are a high risk of fire, and then reducing property maintenance and rental turnovers for those who are smoking in their rented homes. So there's some information I have for you, and if you have any specific questions about the ordinance that was put for you, just let me know.
You want to talk a little bit about what the ordinance says and does for which properties in the county?
So it does discuss, obviously, it was very important that you wanted it to address our county workplaces, especially this facility here, that there was a gathering of folks right in the entryway that tend to use tobacco products or other combustible products that are exposing workers and such. It would also address, obviously, our county parks, those kid-friendly areas. And the current state law already addresses outdoor smoking in
Entryways.
Entryways to businesses. So this would uphold some of those state laws, but also make some of them stronger for the unincorporated area of Lake County since the city of Clear Lake already passed their smoke-free environment policy previously. So it is very similar to Clear Lake's policy that's already established.
So you used it as a model, and that's the ordinance that got an A in the report card.
Anything else to add?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you very much.
Turn it over to you guys.
Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Green.
Thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Francis and Director Arden for meeting with me briefly yesterday to talk about some of the concerns I'm gonna raise here today. But as pointed out, state law already prohibits smoking in any number of places, including workplaces, including multi-unit housing, including our jail. And thank you for the handout. So I have government code sites, health and safety code sites, penal code sites, labor code sites, vehicle code sites. You can't even smoke in your own vehicle with a kid in it. So I guess my first question is, before we dive into the meat and potatoes of this ordinance, is doesn't the county already have the authority and ability to enforce state smoking laws?
You would have to assign somebody to that enforcement group and then find how that's gonna be put together. But the, as you mentioned, some of those things on the flyer that I sent you last night, it doesn't cover each area that we have in here. So you said multi-unit housing or apartment complexes, that is only HUD-funded apartment complexes. It is not related to any other independently-owned or not HUD housing. So there are loopholes within each one of those categories. And currently, our county parks are not smoke-free.
And just for clarification, this is not a multi-unit
No, it is not.
This is
Yeah.
Public areas.
County properties, buildings and parks.
Well, as worded, and I want to clarify with County Council, most ordinances when they come across expressly refer to properties with the unincorporated county. I don't see that similar limitation in this ordinance, nor do I see any limitation to county parks and public areas. What I do see is a fairly expansive definition. A public event areas, public places, recreational areas, such that, the way I'm reading it anyway, basically any public place in Lake County, whether it's a county park or not, would be subject to the provisions of this ordinance. Is that incorrect?
It's my understanding that as far as the workplaces, it was any county-owned workplace, and also county parks and areas in which, within the unincorporated county.
Because it's county-owned.
Or maintained.
I'll just read the definition. Public place, any publicly or privately owned place that is open to the general public, regardless of fee or aid requirement, including sidewalks, streets, parking lots, plazas, shopping areas, stadiums, and sporting facilities. Public event areas means any publicly or privately owned place used for an event, open to the general public, including a farmer's market, a parade, a fair, or a festival. So I see a fairly expansive list of recreational areas, service areas, outdoor dining areas, places of employment, public event areas, and other public places, not limited to county facilities, and applying, at least as currently worded, to all of Lake County, not just the unincorporated portions. And then when I turn to the violations and penalties, it starts off easy enough with a $50 fine and all that, but then you have the whole gamut of alternative remedies, up to including injunctive relief.
Right, I believe the first offense was written very clearly to ask the person to extinguish their smoking device or product, and that the owner or manager of whatever the facility they were on would have the right to ask them to leave. The $50 fine was a later result if they needed to have that in place, but it was definitely not a first response to somebody smoking or using tobacco products on the property.
I just want to thank you for sharing the matrix of local smoke-free outdoor air policies in California. It's a fascinating list. It runs 28 pages. Depending on the city or county, if they exceed state law, they can do anything from addressing smoking in outdoor dining areas, outdoor bar areas, outdoor public events, rights of way, and some of them go so far as to ban vape cartridges entirely.
Exactly.
So based on your understanding, not only do we have a hodgepodge of state laws that may or may not have any state enforcement attached to them, we have a growing body of local ordinances that attempt to inject local wisdom on addressing this important public health issue. I'm just gonna end with a comment. I think this ordinance before us is overbroad. I think tobacco regulation, just like cannabis regulation and alcohol regulation, is a matter of statewide concern. I think it's untenable for CDPH or any state agency to actually encourage this continued proliferation of hodgepodge regulations. I pulled another item for a grant application. There is no standing state funding source apparently for this, so if we are gonna talk about enforcing this ordinance, we're gonna have to come up with some money. And those are my comments right now.
Well, I think you're kind of confusing the Tobacco Retail License Ordinance a little bit with the Smoke-Free Ordinance. The Smoke-Free Ordinance is just really prohibiting smoking in those areas where the tobacco retail license is a separate ordinance that is solving the problem that we have locally of no enforcement of selling to minors and selling flavored vapes and things like that. So this one's the Smoke-Free Ordinance for the county properties.
On all properties. Anyway, those are my comments.
Any further comments or questions? So I know that this is something that I've been wanting to see us debate and talk about for a while. Our parks, where we want families to go to and enjoy their times, do not have any smoke-free policies. I think to me, that is an easy common ground that I would think that we can all get to, that if we have a place where we want our children, our youth, to go and enjoy, that they should have the right to breathe fresh air. Not say you can't smoke, but not here, not in this area. There's nothing in here that prohibits anybody from smoking or purchasing tobacco within this specific ordinance. This just says in some areas, we want the general public to all enjoy a certain level of quality of life.
And clean.
We talk about having one of the cleanest airs in the U.S. It makes no sense to go to the park with your kids and not have that same capability. I know that it's unfortunate how often it happens when I walk in through the doors here. I don't know if people are nervous about the fourth floor, but whether it's smoking tobacco or cannabis, it happens way too often. And sometimes it's further than 25 feet away, but still on the campus, still on the property. I know there was a lot of fear when public health did their smoke-free policy, and there has not been anybody that has left specifically because of that. And people who want to smoke continue to smoke, but do so at And people who want to smoke continue to smoke, but do so at the, at the right areas and the right spots. I also know that I was part of creating a smoke-free campus at Woodland Community College, no impact other than positive impacts. Again, we're not controlling people on what they want to do, it's where they can do it so that it's more conducive to everybody being able to enjoy themselves in specific locations. Now, with that, I will say, maybe there is some better wording that we can utilize, maybe in Section 2A, where it says, "Smoking and tobacco use is prohibited in the unenclosed areas of the following places within the unincorporated areas of Lake County." That way, it's very specific to the unincorporated, and the cities can do their own, since already one city already has one anyways. And maybe also saying, "On the properties owned or leased by," and I think that's why it says private, because we don't own every single facility that, that we have, that we utilize. And so maybe we can incorporate some of that language to make it a little bit more specific. That's my offer to make some slight changes that I think still covers what it is that we're attempting to do, but gives a little bit more specificity.
Fantastic. Any further comments or questions? Then I will open it up for public comment. I see we have Director Turner. We'll start there.
Thank you. I appreciate Health Services bringing this discussion to, to the public today. Nobody can argue about the health complications and the damage that is happening to people who have no business incurring tobacco damage. If I could just remind the board that last year, the board did approve, in concept, the options for special events regarding cannabis and other onsite consumption possibilities in a variety of zoning districts. This cannabis policy update is ongoing at this time, and it was the goal, or it is the goal, to take cannabis regulations from the various different parts of our zoning ordinance and code, and consolidate it into one clearly understood policy update in the single zoning ordinance article. This, the ordinance as it is presented today is very unclear as to what sort of regulations of cannabis are being proposed. It does mention cannabis in some of the findings regarding the health damages, but it's really not clear the overarching limitations of cannabis use in the future. So it also is not very clear on who's doing the enforcing. So it does mention that finding that the cannabis should be a, or that the, actually refers only to smoking and tobacco use, but it does refer to it both as a public nuisance and also refers to civil code enforcement. So I'm not clear if this is something, then, that would be taken on by our code enforcement division, or if this is something that would be left to law enforcement. I'd really appreciate if that could be clarified in general. But additionally, I would request that the references to cannabis smoking be removed from this ordinance so that we can continue our work on, on preparing a cannabis policy update in a single ordinance to bring to the board at a future date. And regulation regarding where cannabis can be consumed would be included in that ordinance. Thank you very much.
Sounds good.
May I make a comment?
Please, in the microphone. In the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. The reason that the cannabis smoke was addressed in this policy is because cannabis smoke also has harms to one's health as a secondhand. Not only could it potentially get into a child's system and have an effect of that high from being too close to that cannabis smoke and inhaling it, but also, the cannabis smoke contains over 30 known carcinogenics in that smoke as well. So it may not be the same as tobacco smoke, but it is still a risk to the non-smoker.
And thank you for that. And my response would be, if we made the changes as I suggested, I don't know that any issues that were brought up about cannabis would be an issue. They're not doing those events on county property. The dispensaries or the smoking lounges are not going to be on county leased or owned properties. So if, if those changes were made there, I think that it would allow for private enterprise to continue to, because I believe if you have a private club in the state of California, you can't smoke indoors. You just can't do it if it's open to the general public. And so I think that there are ways to still allow those types of things, but in general, a public area-
Right.
-this would, owned by the county, leased by the county, that's the only ones that it would have impact on.
Supervisor Green?
And again, I appreciate your offer to amend 2A to add the phrase "unincorporated." But all those service areas, recreation areas, outdoor dining areas, you're not proposing a limitation of county-owned facilities. If you get there and say this only applies to county workplaces and county-owned facilities, you know, discussion over. The way it's worded is much broader than that. The point about the cannabis event, you know, hopefully, it's just the unincorporated county, but at the fairgrounds, we just had Lake Fest with 500 people there. Guess what? They were smoking cannabis. And whether it's a private club or a public event, people smoke tobacco, too. So I get that we can all agree that it is a Prop 65 carcinogen, whether it's cannabis or tobacco smoke. Where we're here talking about today is the public policy, where people, grown adults, 21 and up, possess and use a state legal product. Where can they do that? And so the way this is currently worded is much broader than county-owned facilities only. So, and to the point raised by Director Turner, yeah, if code enforcement is called out in this ordinance, which it very expressly is in the violations and penalties, CDD needs to have input into this and kind of address any zoning ordinance changes that might need to be implemented as a result of this. And a text amendment to the zoning ordinance would go to the planning commission and, among other, stops. So if we can shrink it down to the county footprint only, number one, it's redundant, because probably our county workspaces, other than the public parks, probably have a very good tobacco policy already in place.
Not that I've seen county-wide-
Not that I've seen on that one, other than the Lake County Health Services.
Yeah, they're the only ones currently. And I will say, there's, knowing what the ordinance is in the city of Clear Lake, this does apply to businesses as far as the entryway. And again, this is, I don't mean to bridge to the other ordinance that we're going to talk about, but this is an enforcement that does not occur, and without it being on a resolution, there is no enforcement whatsoever. ATF is not going to come out for somebody that's smoking right in front of the grocery store to tell somebody to stop. It just doesn't make sense for that, and, and granted, it, most of the time, people are asked and they will stop, and if it becomes a harassing situation, it's nice to have a tool in your toolkit to be able to deal with those situations. I'm perfectly fine with the outdoor dining areas. What I'm, what I'm hearing, and granted, I haven't heard from all my colleagues, is maybe baby steps of first, all county properties, unincorporated areas, but I'm, outdoor dining areas, I'm not going to that restaurant if people are smoking, and, and that's just-
Your choice.
We, we are also looking, we, we've talked so much about changing our health metrics, our health outcomes. We are 56 out of 58, and smoking is one of those big shining lights of the things that we are doing that is absolutely unhealthy.
Right.
Our children are accessing it like crazy, and we haven't done anything about it.
Right.
And these are things that, again, we're not trying to stop people from doing those things, we're trying to separate it so that we can have clean environments conducive to positive outcomes and positive activities. I'm, I'm really weirded out that we are, I, I know I got a text and a comment about the cannabis stuff as well, but I, I don't, whether I smell cannabis or I smell tobacco, it, it's not an enjoyable situation. If I'm at a parade, if I'm at a restaurant, if I'm-
Walking.
Walking to the courthouse. Exactly. And I, we unfortunately have lost some public etiquette on how to be kind to one another. And unfortunately, I think that means we got to set some rules and help our health metrics and see what we can do to do better. Continuing to be unhealthy and continuing to be almost dead last in our health metrics makes absolutely no sense to me. Saying that it's freedom, well, okay, the freedom to smoke versus the freedom not to have to inhale chemicals is, again, it's just one area, it's not the whole entire county or the whole entire community. So I'm, I'm struggling with the, the conversation, but I think I'm okay with looking at a piecemeal and just at least pushing this forward slightly, rather than not pushing it at all, because not pushing it at all means we're okay with the status quo. And status quo-
Right. It's not, it's not good enough anymore.
I don't necessarily, I mean, just wanted to comment on something you said. I don't think necessarily there was an etiquette to begin with. I mean, people were used to smoking. You know, my grandpa's one of them. He's even one of those I had to yell at for throwing the butts out the window. I'm like, you can't do that.
Right.
And then the folks that are smoking cannabis are kind of like doing it now because they can, and because they're keeping it as that mindset is, well, it's smoking and we're allowed to do it now, so, so I think this is a good start, you know, to at least lay some sort of foundation.
Absolutely.
So I'm looking at Section 5 enforcement, and Item B says, "The person or employer that has control of that area in which tobacco is restricted would have the authority to ask them to quit smoking, extinguish, leave the property, so forth." Item C says, "County staff or volunteers will be notified of the requirements and the policies. County staff will commit to the requirements." So it, it's pretty much set out that the enforcement would be of, if it is a county workplace, we establish a policy, a policy in the employee handbook that states, "Your workplace is now smoke-free." If it's a matter of a county park, and somebody is using those products in the county park, once this is established, then those employees would have the right to say, "Hey, you know, this is a smoke-free, we're going to assist with signage and education to the community." So it doesn't necessarily mean that law enforcement needs to get involved, but if it is a store owner that's repeatedly asking somebody that's hanging out in front of their establishment to quit using these products, and they don't, then they have the ability to issue that $50 fine or take it to that level of law enforcement interaction. So that's not what we're looking at as a best practice. Most people will comply, but it may take a little bit of time to learn. This is going to be a new social norm.
Yeah. If you don't mind, I'd like to share my experience. So one of my first entries into public health was when I was 18, 19 years old, and just like you, Chair Sabatier, I was very involved with the smoke-free campus of the University of Central Missouri campus, and I heard all the negative things, like, "How, how are you going to enforce this?" Blah, blah, blah. Is campus police going to be handing out citations? And, or we're going to lose student enrollment, or parents aren't going to want their kids to come here? All of the, all of that actually ended up being completely opposite. Our enrollment actually increased the next year when we went smoke-free on the campus, and we got like 100% compliance with the students, because people tend to follow the rules. They understand that when you live a part of society, that government helps with the rules, and people tend to follow them. So the next year, we really had very little non-compliance with the smoke-free ordinances on campus, and most smokers actually welcomed it. I think at the time, we had, our student population was 35% smokers, and the smoke-free resolution passed by the student body by like 82%. So that means even a lot of the smokers on campus actually voted for and passed it, because they understood that, yeah, maybe I have a right to smoke, but I don't have the right to harm other people or make their experience on campus less enjoyable. So I, I feel like this model would work as well in our county parks and our facilities, where people will follow the rules, and, and if people aren't, then it's more of a self-enforcement, like, "Hey, can you please step back another 25 feet, or can you please put that out?" I think that would work very well, and we don't have to get code enforcement or law enforcement involved with this ordinance.
Thank you very much for your comment. If there's nothing further, I'm going to open it up for public input. Oh, please, come on up.
Kevin Lewis, the Chief Deputy with Lake County Probation. We really appreciate Public Health bringing this up. One of the areas that our department is involved in is, throughout the county, we go to fifth grade classrooms and we do education on tobacco, vape, et cetera. And one of the, one of the, the ways that we really appreciate where Public Health's coming from on this is, when the students have exposure at such, such young ages to these products, whether it's, you know, schools, public areas, where we're trying to get them to go out and be able to do pro-social, fun, enjoyable activities, they're put in a position to where the, they begin using and being exposed to these products, and now we have a position that, that, that very negatively impacts their development. And then the older they get, the more, the more intense it affects their development. And so having a, a structure where there's an understanding of, that we want our kids to be healthy, whether that's young age kids, whether that's older age kids, and preventative ways that we can do that without having to have these kids go into intensive counseling services to get intense help that they need for products that they're, that they've been exposed to at a young age and are now using, is going to be really beneficial for the youth and families around our county. And so I can safely say that being involved at multiple school districts around the county, this is not something that, it's one area that's impacted, it's impacted in multiple areas. And so very worthwhile discussion to have, and we thank Public Health for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you, Supervisors, and thank you, staff, for all your hard work on this. Greg Dameron with Blue Zones Project. Prior to working in Lake County, I worked for County of Sonoma's Department of Health Services. I was one of, I was on the Tobacco Prevention Staff Team, supporting all nine jurisdictions' enforcement of their outdoor smoke-free policies. In those two years, as one of the main staff workers assigned, our team only received maybe four calls for support from local jurisdictions or private properties regarding the enforcement of outdoor smoking laws. It's, as was mentioned, it's, there's an intention of self-enforcement. If you don't have a sign there, you don't have a policy, then there's assumption that that behavior can continue. So yes, there's the devils in the details, and those will be worked out. I think that's great. I think the, the important thing is to honor the intention and the urgency of this. During the Tubbs Fire, I'm, I'm not a hero, but during the Tubbs Fire, I, I opted to stay and save neighborhood properties. I damaged my lungs, I had pretty good lungs beforehand. When I walked here today, I had to walk through a cloud of two people smoking right there. If I was in a wheelchair, if I had COPD, if I was an at-risk youth who was trying to avoid starting, or I had just quit, maybe I was in, a senior that had finally quit smoking, there should be a right to not have to have exposure to those, those chemicals. Also, the behavior, you know, when we have family events at a park, if we've got, you know, six 22-year-olds vaping right there, and it's a family event, without a policy, there's no way to say, "Hey, can you take that elsewhere?" So this is just common sense. Yes, well, we trust you all to deal with the intricacies of the details and definitions. But self-enforcement is really how it works. I've been in this world, supporting code enforcement as well as grassroots community solutions to secondhand smoke for about 10 years, and it's not complicated. It's the, the time, the time that we, we spend resolving those would be great, but let's get this passed, because we, we, we needed this 10 years ago.
Right.
We really did. So thank you. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
All right, good morning. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. So for the purposes of this discussion, that includes parks and buildings and grounds under the county control. Just to highlight something that Supervisor Green brought up, and that's the, I guess I'll just say the variety of different codes that exist, laws at the, at the state level for both county buildings or, or public buildings, as well as public parks. Just a few examples. County buildings, any, any public building, no smoking presently- County buildings, any public building, no smoking presently without any local action. No smoking within 20 feet of any door or operable window at a county park. No smoking 25 feet from a playground, county or city park, any park. 250 feet from any youth sports event. So there are already laws in place, proposed, looking to the future. As your board is aware, the county is just wrapping up the Parks, Recreation and Trails Master Plan. One of the immediate actions after that is going to be essentially a whole-scale rewrite of our Parks Code, which I fully anticipated having a smoking component in that, working with Public Health. So conversations with Director Arden, that was intended to be a part of it. Likely, I expected that it would go the route that is being proposed, that you're considering here, which is no smoking on the grounds. Leave that to the board's direction. But also I appreciate the fact that we talked about enforcement here. My staff, you know, our responsibility is the facility itself, the grounds. It's not the enforcement of that. So if we put up signs, that's wonderful, but I won't be expecting my Parks Maintenance Staff or Building Maintenance Staff to be going around and enforcing that. Their responsibility is to fix the lights and ensure the toilets are flushing. Very simple examples there, but if now we're expanding that, I would have some concerns if the expectation is that, you know, county employees are going to be the ones that would be responsible to tell someone not to smoke and the onus is on them. So that's, I think that's something that needs to be worked out there. But as it relates to county buildings, county grounds and the parks, I think this is in line with where I anticipated taking the Parks Code and the building piece could be absolutely a part of that. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew where we were now and where I was proposing to take at least county parks.
Thank you very much.
Samantha Bond, Executive Director for First 5 Lake. I really appreciate Health Services bringing this to the board supervisors. It's really important that we protect our littles. They don't have a say. They don't get to choose what goes into their lungs. And so when we're talking about public places, regardless of it being tobacco, vape, or cannabis, they don't get a say. It is the individual who's near them that is telling them whether or not they have that second or third-hand smoke. And I know that it's in the definitions here, but third-hand smoke, just so that everybody knows, is that gunk that sits, that residue that's always there, that's very difficult to get rid of. And we know that all of our littles touch everything and everything goes back into their mouths. And so they don't get that choice and that opportunity to say, no, I don't want this. No, I don't need this, when it is going to impact them the most. It is their little lungs that are suffering. It is their little bodies that are suffering from this kind of thing. So to bring this forward and to be able to have this as one means of protection for our littles is crucial and really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber wishes to speak on this item? I have a couple of hands up in Zoom. He's coming up.
There are a group of people, tribal people, youth, through the CIMCC that have been working for four years. And this year they launched a program called Honor the Air Program. And they've been going through tribal areas of Lake, Mendocino, and Sonoma County to advise, to teach, educate on the well-being of their families and others. And they're giving this information away all the time. And you can go online. I've been part of that for the traditional tobacco and how to spread that information because it actually does affect all the other smoking situations in this world that you all are talking about. So it is at www.cimcc.org/PPP. And you can look that up and they're doing great work all the time. And they're youths, they're the youths of the people who are wanting to preach.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber wishes to speak on this?
I'd just like to add that this policy does address that this is commercial tobacco and not sacred use for ceremonial purposes.
Thank you for that.
I have one thing that I would like to expand on that I've been hearing from a couple of members of the audience, and that is it's not just second and third-hand smoke that we're exposing to our young ones. It's witnessing the act of seeing it in county parks and near county buildings that sends a message to the little kids that smoking is okay or that it's a normal or accepted behavior. By limiting smoking in some of these areas, you're not just removing the harmful thing, but you're also sending a powerful message to the kids that this is no longer a universally accepted thing to do in society. And by passing an ordinance like this, you are sending a message that we are taking, here in Lake County, we are taking our health outcomes and our health disparities seriously.
Thank you for that. I'm going to call on Rachel Dilman Parsons first on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. I fully sup-
Now we can't hear you.
We just lost you. We had you, then we lost you.
We heard the important part.
You should be back.
She was often promoted to panelist, so she should be able to share.
Okay. You're muted at this moment?
Oh, I'm sorry. They joined me as a panelist and I think it muteded me. Where did I? I'll start over. So I support this in general to, you know, keep the health and safety of the population in Lake County. However, I have concerns about our Anderson Ranch facility and would like to see that addressed perhaps in ordinance. We have a very long driveway that is not our property, but it is lined by a lot of weeds. And I am fearful that people who normally smoke at our facility will be walking down that driveway to smoke and perhaps increase fire danger. So I would request that taken into consideration. That said, I do support creating a smoke-free environment for the health of everybody. So I hope we can find a solution. Thank you.
Bless you.
Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Again, just in follow-up to that, that is a leased facility. So I think just to emphasize the fact that there's, or the point that there are, you know, county-owned buildings, we're in one, but there are leased buildings that have leases with obviously the owner. And so that each one would have to be considered as a part of this process. So I appreciate that being brought up and it was already referenced, but I wanted to just emphasize that that was one example. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Erin McCarick.
Thank you, Supervisors. This is Erin McCarick in Clear Lake. And thanks for bringing up this conversation. Definitely support the keeping our public spaces smoke-free, making sure that that is a healthy place for everybody, kids, adults, everyone. But echoing what has been said before, that making sure that it is clear that it is not privately-owned establishments or private events that choose to operate, whichever way they choose to operate, because there's plenty of smoking, public smoking bans in many cities across California, but they still do not expand into privately-owned businesses. And echoing what Director Turner said about maybe incorporating with the cannabis ordinance rewrite, just creating more of a comprehensive approach to it. Also, just for curiosity's sake, I'm wondering if there is any supporting documents. I tried to look at the stuff on the Board of Supervisors Agenda website, but any supporting documents for some of the research that's in there in the proposed ordinance and some of the citations in there? Yeah, that is it. Thank you so much for this time. And again, just a little bit less broad on the ordinance is my comment.
Thank you very much. And I would say reach out to one of us and we'll see if we can connect you with Public Health Services to get you some of that data and information. Let's move on to iPhone 2.
My name's Jessica Pender and I am in Lower Lake. And I am going to echo, thank you, Board of Supervisors, first off, for holding this. And I'm going to echo with Erin and Director Turner on being less broad in the ordinance and taking the private events out of it. And also maybe looking into other uses of unhealthy items in parks, around grocery stores and other public areas. And thank you again for looking at this because I do agree, smoking for our children and adults and anybody is an unhealthy thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jennifer Smith. And you're still muted.
Sorry.
And if you could just put your hand down when you're done so I know not to call on you again. Thank you.
Jennifer Smith, and I did want to address the cannabis portion of this. We just had a very success, you know, a first-time event, Lake Fest Cannabis Cup. Proud to say that my farm won in first place. And I think that this is, we're not going to be able to continue to have and grow this cannabis event or the industry if we're not allowed to have a ticketed event. And it says very specifically in this write-up that regardless of fee, where did it say? Regardless of, you know, if it's a ticketed event or not, that you're not going to be able to have this. And, you know, I agree, there's consideration that needs to be had and people need to have manners and not be blowing smoke over children or anybody else of any age. But I just want to make sure that if it is known that and advertised that smoking will be held on site, that those events are be able to take place. And that's not just cannabis. It's, you know, big smoke is a cigar-smoking event with whiskey. And there's ways to accommodate special events and I don't think that they should be included to this degree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the hands in Zoom. I'm going to come back to the chamber, make sure there's no further public comment in the chamber. I see none. I will make a couple of comments. I know that I've done events multiple times in places where you're not allowed to have a PA system, you're not allowed to have alcohol, but you can get special use permits, including at our schools, now that California passed that law, in order to get permission to do your own thing for a private event. So I, there's been a lot of conversation. I know that there was some offering to look at the unincorporated areas, the county-owned or leased areas. There was some comments made from multiple departments and wondering how the board feels about making a request to meet with those departments, come back with something that would be similar to what you are offering, but helps better understanding of who's the enforcement, what's the safety measures on, like for example, the Anderson Ranch, just kind of taking a look at those things and trying to implement whatever needs to happen. I personally would like to see state law written in this because again, no one from the state is coming in to do anything to help us with state law. This allows us to, but maybe not go above and beyond what the state law is. And I'd love to hear if that's a consensus from the board to please meet with them and come back to us because I'm very interested in moving forward with something to help reduce what folks, especially younger folks, do not need to be subjected to so we can enjoy the quality of life in our public spaces.
Fantastic. Supervisor Pisca?
Yeah, so I appreciate you bringing this. I know it's been a long haul and it's been a priority of ours for a long time. But listening to the comments, it seems like we need to take another look at this. Isn't something that we should try and address on the fly? So I think definitely a little bit more collaboration with the different department heads to kind of address some of the concerns that we've heard today. That would be my preference.
Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Green?
Sure. Talk to as many department heads as you want. As it pertains to county facilities, again, my major beef with this, it is not limited to county facilities. I want to take another run at the multi-unit housing. You can look here in Lakeport, you can go right down Bevins and look at the smokers in exile from their own apartments. They at least have the refuge out on the sidewalk. This would take that away. So going back-
Not addressing multi-unit housing in this policy.
Public places includes everything, sidewalks included. So I'm just wondering, there's no opportunity in here for a designated smoking area of any type? And I'm looking to our subsidized housing here in Lakeport as the models. I don't want to criminalize people who are making their own choices of what to put in their own bodies. Yes, there is no constitutional right to smoke, I assume. It's not cited, but it's in there, but nor is there any constitutional right to guarantee a smoke-free environment. I hear, hey, kids can be exposed to smoke. Guess what? The first time they're exposed, more often than not, is in their own homes because their parents are smoking. And this is not going to address that. So if you can get me a smaller footprint, that is not every public place in Lake County, including sidewalks and streets, if you can give some type of safe refuge for people that are using state legal substances, if we're not trying to bring cannabis out of the closet and then force tobacco smokers back in the closet at the very same instant, to your point, yeah, role modeling is important, but that doesn't mean we criminalize an entire subset of Lake County's population for making their own personal health choices. And we do not have a constitutional right to regulate our citizens in that way. And when we see the divide in this county and when we see people distrust government in general, it's this type of overreach that gets us there.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I appreciate the conversation today. I know that these were started many years ago and then obviously we had six years of disasters, one after the other. Which took a lot more priority. So I know the initial conversations that happened was we wanted something to come to the board. It's taken a lot longer than we wanted to, but obviously I'm in favor of the conversation that we're having. I think there is a lot more work that needs to be done and I agree about the smoking areas. You know, even in our airports here in the United States, there's no smoking anywhere, but you can go smoke inside an airport because there's a designated smoking area. So figuring some of those conversations out are important. And I think something to realize on this stuff as far as enforcement, there is no one agency that's going to be able to enforce any of these things. It's going to be a combination of just changed behavior by public and understanding that. But as far as sending a message that we are looking at this and looking to create safer zones for everybody and opportunities there, especially with the growth of our parks we're going to have over the next decade, I think is really important. So I'm willing to hopefully, like you said, have some more conversations, come back to the board, but I'm in favor of this ordinance getting passed at some point. So-
Very well said.
Continue the conversation.
Fantastic.
I think too that like in reading on O where it says smoke or smoking means inhaling, exhaling, or burning any tobacco, nicotine, cannabis, or plant product, like that could be like burning wood when you're barbecuing with wood, you know? I mean, so just specifications, another thing you mentioned too, was medicine for Native Americans that commonly don't use cigarettes. The tobacco that was used ancestrally was actually picked locally and it wasn't used like a common cigarette or anything like that. It was used for something specific and that was that. So I think that it would help to come back with a little more delineation on some of this.
I do know that some folks have expressed their difficulty finding tobacco that they can use for their ceremonial purposes and sometimes they are known to use other forms of tobacco. So that's why we wanted to make sure that this was only for commercial tobacco use and not ceremonial use.
True. It is, it's still used like they buy the bag or-
Right.
Tear apart a cigarette or whatever the case may be. But I hear you, it is used at times, but I think it can be explained better.
Okay.
Do you need clarification of the direction being provided by the board?
I don't think so.
Okay. And luckily this is reported, so it's easy-
Wrapping notes and it's recorded as well.
It's easy to go back over the video and get the comments. And thank you very much for bringing this to the attention of the board. And, CAO Parker?
Yes, since this is in reference to an ordinance, we'd like to have it continued to a date and time certain. And the ninth is very full. So looking towards Anthony-
What kind of timeline do you guys need? What kind of timeline do you guys need, you think, in meeting with all those departments and being able to bring it back? I'm thinking maybe even August to give them the amount of time that they need.
I was gonna say like a month, a month and a half?
That work for you? Okay. So we're looking at, is that August 6th?
I'm looking at Johanna. I'll need a-
Any day in August?
Time.
Any, any day in August, at whatever time.
At whatever time. That means we have empty agendas to fill up right now. So how about August? Is that the 6th that I'm seeing? I can't-
Yes.
Uh, August 6th at 10:00 a.m.? Okay. Looking for a motion to continue this conversation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll get to work on those amendments for you and be back in six weeks.
Perfect. And we will see you after this following item as well.
Yep.
Thank you for everybody's patience. We are a little bit behind schedule. We are going to take up item 6.8, 10:00 a.m. Consideration of the Final Report of the Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee. And Mr. Rothstein and Ms. Cicato is coming up. And Ms. Farrell.
And more members in Zoom.
Yeah, we have other board members joining us via Zoom. We have Chair Cromwell and Georgina Marie Gordado. I believe she's in the library.
After Georgina's-
I'm actually, I'm at my home library. Good morning, everyone. I will be starting us off. My name is Georgina Marie Gordado. I'm the former poet laureate of Lake County for 2020 to 2024 and the literacy program coordinator for the Lake County Library. I also served on the Community Visioning Forum, and we wanted to open this presentation with a poem by Joy Harjo, who is the former National Poet Laureate of the United States. This is just a small excerpt from her poem, "Conflict Resolution for Holy Beings." Recognize whose lands these are on which we stand. Ask the deer, turtle, and the crane. Make sure the spirits of these lands are respected and treated with goodwill. The land is a being who remembers everything. You will have to answer to your children and their children and theirs. The red shimmer of remembering will compel you up the night to walk the perimeter of truth for understanding. As I brushed my hair over the hotel sink to get ready, I heard, "By listening, we will understand who we are in this holy realm of words. Do not parade, pleased with yourself. You must speak in the language of justice."
Thank you. Thank you, Georgina, for sharing those words and good morning supervisors. I'm Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. 2020 was a year of change for every American. The COVID-19 pandemic rocked many long-held assumptions and the way we interact. The untimely and tragic deaths of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd were cultural flashpoints that brought a renewed sense of urgency surrounding the policies and conduct of every public-facing organization. Inspired by a June 2020 sermon from a Kelseyville faith leader, Lovis Lewis, a self-organized Lake County group called "A Community Call to Action: A Loving Response to Systemic Racism in America," grappled with what could be done here at the local level, including encouragement of action by the County of Lake and other government organizations. On February 23, 2021, your board collectively resolved to host public forums to discover community priorities in the following categories. Meaningful actions and activities that will build bridges where there may be walls, fostering tolerance, respect, understanding, equity, and inclusion, promoting nonviolence and nonviolent conflict resolution, focusing resources on underlying causes and conditions that lead to inequitable resource and justice distribution, and relevant solutions for any social injustices as they may come to light. The Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee was created to host those forums, and today's presentation and the final report attached to your board's agenda document that work and our work products of the Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee. The committee is grateful to all who joined and engaged in discussion at these events. There are a broad diversity of perspectives among Lake County residents, and all voices were welcomed and invited. Committee members acknowledge, for numerous reasons, not every perspective was shared in the 2023 public forums. This report documents perspectives that were shared via the Honoring All Voices Forum Series. This morning's presentation will include recommendations of potential next steps to continue this work, including gathering of further information. Community-focused recommendations will be presented by Dolores Farrell on behalf of the committee. Information on the Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee's purpose and journey and participants will be shared by Chairman Benaya Kim Cromwell of Robinson Rancheria, who's here via Zoom this morning. And background on the community forums themselves will be provided by Joanne Cicato, a valued contributor to both the Community Call to Action Group and this committee. And now I'm pleased to introduce Chairman Cromwell, again appearing via Zoom.
So we need to go, we need to advance slides.
Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate that. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Honored to be, honored to speak on behalf of the Lake County Community Vision Forum Planning Committee. I apologize, we didn't have an acronym for it, but we tried really hard. So I think the Board of Supervisors, not just for today and this opportunity to share our report, but thank you for your vision and your leadership during that time that Matthew spoke about. Post-2020, there was a lot of divisions in our community, in our state, in our nation. But the Board of Supervisors wanted to go for the proclamation that included tolerance, respect, equity, as well as inclusion. And so I want to say thank you, and this is our report today, that purpose, the purpose was those words that we used in the proclamation. Those were the beacon lights to say meaningful action, fostering tolerance, promoting nonviolence, focusing resources-
Chair Cromwell, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We need to increase the volume, if possible, to make sure that we can hear them clearly.
Sure. How about that? Did that help?
I apologize. I'm looking and speaking to Sam Houston to see if he can help.
Oh. Yeah, I was just trying to increase my iPad, see if that helped.
But that's better right there. Perfect. I apologize for the interruption.
Okay. I just wanted to say that those words in that proclamation were the beacon that we followed, and that was our purpose as a, as a forum planning committee. The journey itself was a committee coming together with different backgrounds and ages and life experiences and educational experiences and where we're at in our journeys today. But I wanted to say that journey was, was, was created because of community members that cared, that community members that sacrificed hours after work, sacrificed hours before work, met on Zoom when they could, and, and put things on hold so that they could be a part of this. So there's so much apart, not only the purpose, but the journey. And again, thank you for the commitment that you showed in trusting this process, in trusting our committee, and then providing those resources needed. And we're happy to be here to report it. But I wanted to share that this committee does show the best of our community that are here for the future, betterment and healing of our, of our community, so in a brighter future for all of us. So thank you for that, taking that time, that leadership, and that patience needed. Appreciate it. Yep.
Thank you.
These are just some of the participants. Yeah, sorry, the slides were just some of the committee members by name and the participants. So, so thank you to all of them. If we could just keep that up for a few more seconds, those who helped create this over time and, and again, in an era of division. And we came together to work together and just glad that we could be here. And so thank you to all the staff for the county, all the consultants that helped, and we'll talk about them here, and all the community members that came out and were participants. So thank you for that.
All right, let's see. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So in the committee's early stages, we decided it would be most beneficial to use an outside consultant because we know it's difficult to see the water we're swimming in here. And we really wanted to take a look with fresh eyes at what was happening here in Lake County. We received enthusiastic commitment to participate in the committee and the forums from both the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, and they also offered a financial commitment to engaging with a consultant. So the committee gathered and assessed proposals and ultimately engaged with Nicole Anderson and Associates, who unfortunately couldn't join us today. But Nicole and Dr. Shelley had gone far beyond and above their contracted duties to help the committee. We're grateful for their facilitation of our group process, for the education on the broader issues of inclusion, fairness, and respect, and as well as working to facilitate a safe space in order to maximize participation and authentic engagement in our forums, and really for helping us get to this moment where we can come to the board today. Excellent. Thank you. So we held three forums over a period of two months, beginning in April of 2023. Our intention was to diversify our geographic presence while engaging with technology to maximize our reach. Our first forum was held right here in the Board of Supervisors' chambers, and it's where we had the broadest reach experienced with the forums. Our second, our second forum was generously hosted by Chairman Cromwell and the Robinson Rancheria Pomo Indians of California. We were treated to a full dinner, and in that space, powerful family stories were told and an impressive quality of conversations arose. The third forum was at the city of Clear Lake in the council chambers there, where we heard some very poignant experiences from community members, including one local leader, who shared deeply honest experiences about their personal journey of reflection and unpacking how different their experiences had been to others in their community, and humbly acknowledging the challenges that others faced. We reflected in our planning meetings that the willingness to do that in front of others, to feel safe enough, was actually notable and speaks to how this board here, through its proclamation, empowered this opportunity for awakening. Excellent. I think we're supposed to go back to, I'm sorry, we got a little mixed up. If we could go back to the Clear Lake, the Lakeport, this one here, yeah. So our total in-person attendance was around 75, and yet our technology allowed us to reach even more. So this is statistics from the first forum, which was the most successful in generating reach beyond those that attended in person. What we learned is that when we offered the forums with technology, the reach could be significantly broader, as you can see, as you can see here. All the forums are available to view on the county's website and also their Facebook page and the YouTube channel. Now we can go to the next one. So the committee had landed on four questions to pose to participants, and then after all the forums were complete, we synthesized those into themes. And I'm just going to share the themes that were revealed. It's all in the report that we submitted to the board. Under the first question, how do you define respect, fairness, and inclusion? Basically, people want to feel welcomed. They want to feel heard, and they want to feel valued despite any differences. And I think if we took an assessment of who was in the room today, I'm pretty sure that most everybody would feel the same about that. We want to feel welcomed, heard, and valued despite our differences. With the second question of what gets in the way of you and your family getting your needs met, no new information here. It's a matter of lack of services and resources, healthcare resources, behavioral health resources, and housing. When it came to what history must be acknowledged to begin community healing, specifically historical trauma that included the actions of Andrew Kelsey and Charles Stone, and also other instances, were brought to our attention, and the felt, the feeling was that these stories, these histories need to be heard and held in compassion to be healed. And then finally, what would support all of our Lake County residents feeling respected, included, and experiencing fair outcomes were continued listening sessions, education, outreach, translation services so more could participate, and diversified leadership. There were a few more themes that were revealed through our process itself, and not necessarily arose from within the forums, but throughout the life of the committee. One of those overarching themes was about safety. We know that we can only learn what we learned from those that were in the rooms. We could learn about their experiences because they were able to get into the rooms, but we also know that public forums, video recording, and broadcasting live can create some real barriers to participation. So we knew that we weren't hearing the full story, and we knew it had to do with safety. We actually learned in private conversations that safety is a big concern, and it's not just about historical, it's about present day. And I have to say, it was deeply disheartening to learn about present-day behaviors and actions that are being directed towards some of our community members. It was actually kind of astonishing and sad. So if we are able to focus on promoting healing broadly, creating a community vibe where everyone feels safe in all spaces, then what we learned is that there's a lot more work to be done. And this moves us into the committee's recommendations, and for that, I'll go ahead and hand it off to Dolores Farrell. Thank you.
Which mic should I be speaking into?
Matthews.
Or do I just speak loudly? So my recommendations, we already addressed the internal ones, that's going to be you after me. Okay, the recommendations that I'm going to just go over are the external ones, the community-focused ones, the ones that we as community members ourselves maybe can do something about. So this talks about Board of Supervisors to decide whether to convene an ongoing ad hoc committee. Are we going to do this again, that would engage topics and community partners to address diversity, equity, and inclusion issues in Lake County, or work to create a community-led coalition? Are we going to have these meetings again? That would be a question that we're going to pose to our Board of Supervisors as the community. Will we create and maintain pages on the county's and the city's websites, raising awareness of diversity, equity, and inclusion work, including resources? Will we continue holding community forums and other engagement opportunities, such as small groups, community walks, or one-on-one sessions that capture the experiences and perceptions of historically and currently marginalized community members and reveal specific community member needs? Will we continue to do that? Will we develop and conduct a survey that provides anonymous space for marginalized voices to be heard? Sometimes folks have to be anonymous so they can speak their truth. Will we work to deconstruct implicit bias and a new narrative around diversity, equity, and inclusion work through awareness campaigns? Will we leverage community partnerships, including local advocacy groups, service agency, and ombudsman to advance diversity, equity, inclusion efforts across the county? Will we engage with an indigenous data framework for additional quantitative data gathering? That's a whole lot of sentence. That's a whole lot of sentence. And all it means is, will we come together recognizing that, I'm going to read this over here, where that came from? Came from a lady named Abigail Echo Hawk. This woman happens to be native. I am not native, but it certainly- I am not native, but it certainly resounds with me. She says, at the end of her article, she's a research analyst for the City of Seattle Indian Health Board. The last part of her article says, "I know who I'm descended from, and I know their stories. And they survived so I could thrive. So I'm not going to continue that legacy that I am so blessed to follow in the footsteps of the unconscious and the stories that they whispered in languages that we weren't supposed to speak anymore." That's Black folks, too. Of cultural practices that they attempted to outlaw. The grandmas whispered them ear to ear, generation to generation, so that I could practice them today, so I could have that dream. That's what indigenous research is. That's continuity. That's continuity. Tomorrow is Juneteenth. Be in Middletown at 5:00 tomorrow. That's continuity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. And in partnership with our consultants, the committee also made internally focused recommendations for the consideration of your board and the city councils, which include the following. Create an office of equity and/or engage an equity officer. Provide ongoing staff diversity, equity, and inclusion training and professional development. Develop an internal committee or employee resource group made up of representatives from each department. And with the note that that group of people could be responsible to ensure alignment of the work across departments. Develop an anonymous reporting system that includes a timely and effective response process. Recruit, hire, and retain staff that represent the diversity of Lake County. Hold and engage and/or engage in joint elected official study sessions to educate at the level of policy, systems, and power, and include, invite the school boards, tribal nations, et cetera, where appropriate and feasible. Ensure representation of marginalized community members on all appointed advisory bodies. And as was stated with the community-focused recommendations, engage with an indigenous data framework when possible for collection of additional qualitative data.
Thank you, Matthew. So we also wanted to close with a poem to round this presentation out. This is another poem by Joy Harjo, again, our National Poet Laureate, prior to Ada Lamon, and she is native. This is the poem, "This Morning I Pray For My Enemies." And whom do I call my enemy? An enemy must be worthy of engagement. I turn in the direction of the sun and keep walking. It's the heart that asks the question, not the furious mind. The heart is the smaller cousin of the sun. It sees and knows everything. It hears the gnashing even as it hears the blessing. The door to the mind should only open from the heart. An enemy who gets in risks the danger of becoming a friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgina. The Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee is grateful to your board and the Clear Lake and Lakeport City Councils for your commitments to fund forum facilitation. And the engagement of residents in the work undertaken thus far demonstrates community interest and a need for ongoing efforts and collaboration to promote the safety, well-being, and success of all Lake County residents. This completes the committee's report, and your board's consideration is very much appreciated.
Well, I want to thank the board, the committee, for the work that you put together. I know that I got to experience one of those forums. Great conversations, heartfelt conversations, deep conversations, and I think that putting our guards down and actually getting to know individuals is the best way to get rid of the discrimination and the way that we have our implicit biases. Until we get to know one another, we just don't know. And I think that it's very special to crumble the walls and get to know each other in our communities, and we do have quite diversity within our communities. So appreciate the time spent, appreciate, I do want to highlight, Nicole Anderson, I think, did a fabulous job of organizing and leading the conversations during these forums. I couldn't speak highly enough of her and what she did during those times. I do want to mention that we also received some public comments, and I just want to make sure and highlight that some of the concerns from the public comments that we received was based on a summary of the themes and the public comments and input received during the forums, and that these are not within the recommendations themselves in which both Dolores and Matthew spoke of just currently. And so at this moment in time, it's to look how we move forward with the recommendations that are in front of us, and I want to open that conversation up for the board.
Oh, no. It wasn't there.
Okay. So, yeah, I've been the longest, you know, board member that was present at these meetings. I know that Tina Scott was initially appointed with me, and so in doing so, you know, these discussions were a very good, safe space for people to come and be a part of. I'd also like to note, there were still a lot of folks that still didn't feel comfortable enough to come in this setting, and that holds true with a lot of different things, even proclamations that we do. I've invited a lot of people for one we did earlier today that still didn't feel comfortable enough to come because of a lot of the discussions and things that have happened in the county. So just wanted to highlight that this is what we're hoping to get to, is the small steps of getting people together in the same room, talking about these different things, and it did happen in these meetings. It was great to see that, and just appreciated everyone being a part of it, opening up and giving this opportunity for each other to come together and, you know, make community division into community discussions.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I got subbed in after Supervisor Scott left. I found it humbling and empowering, and not all at the same time. It's quite a journey, and started off feeling safe, and as the forums went on, I got progressively less safer because I was like questioning my own experiences and my own life journey, and trying to contextualize it with new perspectives that were being shared by some members of the public and by some other members of the visioning committee. But at the end of the day, it was such a fantastic journey of self-inspection and introspection that encouraged me to not only use my active listening skills, which I struggle with on a good day, but to actually listen to issues that are not even a thing in my universe, or at least not in my life's journey of how I had to deal with, for example, disproportionate enforcement. You know, we did talk in the committees about law enforcement, whether we needed to bring some policies forward, and you don't actually see that in these final recommendations because as we did the work, it's like definitely it can be an issue in some communities, but it did not rise to the top of the heap in our local process. You know, it's quite a weighty list of recommendations. There is some choices this board can and hopefully will make, some focused internally, some focused externally. I just found it fascinating. I'm glad there is a record of it. You know, I did ask that we include the link to the YouTube playlist that is on the county YouTube channel, and apparently also on our Facebook feeds. If you're wondering what we're all talking about up here in terms of DEI and why we're waxing poetic about it, you can go back and roll the tape. You can literally go back and hear about the issues we were talking and about the various recommendations and how they took shape. So it's not, we did not do this in a black box. We did this in a very transparent and open way, and to the point, there are some comments that have been made about receiving information about concerns, about past traumas. We need to hear that information, but it is not a drill-down recommendation as presented here today. So, thank you.
Supervisor Piska?
Can we pull the recommendations back up?
Internal or external?
So as two supervisors that attended these talked about the experience, I am looking at the list of recommendations, and there's quite a lot here. And I'm just wondering if there's any more examples or thoughts on how we might implement some of these, because it's pretty broad, and it would be a really big discussion for us to drill down on that today. So I think there's probably some more conversations that need to happen on how we figure out which paths to follow. I'm just asking either of you or the members to kind of speak on that.
Yeah, this may be something for an ongoing committee to begin looking at, start from the recommendations, and then moving forward for those deeper conversations of how and/or which ones that you would like to proceed with.
Well, I think Joanne said it well. This is the start of a conversation. Yes, there are many potential options, and, you know, having more conversation about that would be fruitful. So we definitely appreciate all of the work so far, and we'll look forward to continuing that conversation. And certainly with the direction of your board, we're happy to look into any of these to the extent that you would like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Supervisor Simon?
Appreciate the work that's been done by the committee and everyone that's came through. You know, obviously, the recommendations, we got a lot more work to do. Rick Mayo said it perfectly earlier in that proclamation. There's a lot more work and conversations that need to happen. You know, even when we look internally here at some of the county policies and other things, I know we've come a long ways, but there's still more work that needs to be done. If we just look at the overall diversity of our, you know, our employees here in the county. So there's a lot of work to be done. I know we're making steps forward, but I appreciate the recommendations today, and this is said informational only and direction. So it's interesting how we're going to do both those today. But, you know, I appreciate the work, and like I said, there's just more work to be done. I was proud when we voted on this to get it started and to go through it, and giving people a safe place to really understand who they're living with is really important, really is important. And it's not just happening here in Lake County, it's happening all over the state. You have the Truth and Healing Council and some other councils that have been put together by the governor, and we'll continue those conversations as we're moving forward. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, there are some recommendations that hopefully we can follow up with continuing this, whether it's an ad hoc committee or something to that effect. But obviously, thank you very much for the work done.
I just wanted to add one more thing. I found another thing to be very positive, was I know initially because of where the proclamation came from and the timeframe in regards to George Floyd, it was very hesitant for law enforcement at the time to be a part of it because of the defund the police and things like that. And one of the things we wanted to make sure was that, you know, this wouldn't be a place to basically attack law enforcement, it was to talk about it. Fortunately, Chief Rasmussen, actually Supervisor-elect Rasmussen, and Lieutenant Stobie, and now Chief Stobie were a part of it, and they played a big role in helping us and having these discussions, and it was really good to see that. And I just wanted to highlight that it was good to have them there.
Thank you for that.
Can I clarify something? I said that maybe having an ad hoc committee, but that was one of the questions that was left for the board to decide. Does the board want to house the work moving forward through an ad hoc committee and then convening the various partners that are important, the stakeholders? Or does the board want to be part of maybe a community organized entity that may not have the same restrictions that the ad hoc committee has? But then the board, you know, would have a representation there, the county would have a representation at that entity. So that was one of the questions that we had in the report to determine.
And I think there's been a comment leading towards maybe not continuing with the exact same ad hoc committee, because I don't know if they were, all those members were members of the committee, that's quite a large committee, but maybe dwindling those numbers to a manageable amount that can look at these external and internal recommendations and really hash them out and bring out something that's a little bit more substantial than just a one-sentence comment of what it would do, and then bring those back to the Board of Supervisors for consideration. Something along those lines.
I have one comment about this. It would appear that some of these items that are directed internally don't need committee work, I would think. For example, this item that says, "Provide ongoing staff DEI training and professional development." Now, I don't know what county staff training schedule is. I don't know the items that they're currently scheduled to include in their annual training or whatever, but I don't think that that item needs an ad hoc committee to study that. I think that's something that county whoever can look at and say, "What are our requirements for staff currently? We're identifying that there's some additional training related to DEI needed. Let's put that in the schedule, and then you guys can actually tell us. Okay, here's our current training schedule. This is what's included." So I don't think we need committees to discuss that. That's an internal thing that you can look at, your own employee requirements or where they are with that now. But obviously, to the general public, we're saying that if we think county employees need some more training, you may come back and say, "Yeah, we're going to add that. You know, we don't need to discuss this again." Or, "We already have that in place, and we'll just follow up on it." So there are some items on here. I don't think we have to convene a committee to really discuss.
And I appreciate that, and I think that staff would probably cross off the things that we are already doing. I know that we have started the DEI. I don't know if it's annual or if it's every two years. I know we just did it this past year, but that's been put into place, and I think crossing off the things that we have done, I know I've had a lot of conversations about this with different groups, and to be honest, I don't know anybody who has successfully taken a look at DEI and changed the outcome. And I think we need to have purposeful action of saying, "Who constantly seems to be at the bottom and does not get the access, does not get the voice, does not get the support, and what can we change to change those numbers?" Typically, we know, but we don't take a look at what actions have we taken and what have those actions changed. And I think that's what the ad hoc committee would be for, is to provide those actions or recommendations of actions, and then being able to track to make sure that change is happening, and if not, then bringing it back to the board's attention and saying, "This isn't working," or "You're not implementing this the right way," or something along those lines. Because I really feel like we could talk all day long, and I think we all agree that everyone needs to be treated appropriately. We need to be welcoming and offer a safe space. We are a public service entity, but we have yet to make the major change that changes those numbers and the outcomes. And I think that, for example, our health metrics, we were just talking about that. And so I think that's what I would need the ad hoc, to be able to really have that focus to help us continue to pay attention and give us the information that we need to have. Just because there's so many other things happening, it's nice when you can have one group that's focused on just that to make it a little easier to gain that information, and also insight from others that are doing the work outside of Lake County, be able to learn from them. So that's just me speaking. Again, I would like to see the ad hoc continue and take a look at those things, and obviously, what we're already doing would be crossed off the list.
A new ad hoc, though. You said you're finished. Well, no, I'm just saying that the purpose of this ad hoc committee is culminating in this moment right now.
Our job is done.
And how you proceed, or if you proceed with another ongoing committee that's board-directed, then you decide what that would be moving forward. But our work is done today.
And I would agree to that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment after what Joanne's comment was about whether it's ad hoc or a community-based committee that the board, you know, would send a couple of members or something. of members or something like that to be a part of. I think that, since you mentioned that, I just want to comment. You know, I think, I said ad hoc committee, so it really got to go on. Those are the words came out of my mouth. So, but when you mentioned, you know, the community-based committee, I think that's more important because I think that could be more powerful where just the board is committing or a couple of the board members are committing to go to those meetings and to understand. I really just take it from an example of the power coming from the community is more important than from elected officials or anybody else. These are the folks that are living together, just trying to survive and understand who their community, who their tribe, who their village is. So really understanding that. And I just, I'll take an example of two committees I have in my district. I have the Math, Middletown Area Town Hall Advisory Committee of the Board. Then I have the Lower Lake Action Committee Group, who's not a county group. And they have the same voice through the district supervisor, at least while I'm sitting here, to bring stuff to the board, affect their community and work that hard. And they don't have all the restraints. They have their own, they have their meeting place. They work with the county to have that done. So I think there's value there. Really learn that there is value there because Brown Act and all these other things and all these restrictions, you know, that the advisory committees have, the Lower Lake Action Committee doesn't have. They do a good job of engaging the community. So I want to show the value that goes both ways. And you mentioned something, so I just want to talk. I don't know what it looks like, but I think a community-based committee that each year the board would just appoint, you know, a couple of members to go to, I think, moving forward would be a good conversation to have. I don't know what it looks like, but prime example is advisory committee or Lower Lake Action Committee Group. And they have the same voice, sometimes I think even a little more powerful because they don't feel like they're elected officials trying to do this stuff. They're just community members that really care about what happens at the park or at their streets or what's going on. So I want to give value to that. Get government out of it.
Ooh. But the county may be willing or it may be a desire to add resources to be able to have that happen. Because these forums didn't happen without cost, as you well know. So, you know, if the county wants to be a partner in that and maybe can offer resources to help that happen, all the better.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, Supervisor Simon, yeah. Organizational lift, whether it's the county or community group, there's work involved and it's hard to sustain that. You do need funding and you need the vision to form whatever that group's going to be. And then you need leaders to actually drive that work from meeting to meeting. Continuum of Care stands out as a community-driven organization, but it's taken years for us to grow that into something that's functional. Now we have a memorandum of understanding and it is supported indirectly. But it's a heavy lift. So I just want to point out that an ongoing ad hoc committee is an oxymoron. So we could do an ad hoc for some specific issues that are time limited in scope. Or we could have a standing committee or community group that would take a longer term look at just DEI issues generally. To your point, though, I'm not aware of any local organization that is immediately in a position to step up and provide that. So I think just by default, the county would be the more logical choice initially to stand up and ad hoc if needed, even if the longer term vision was to bootstrap a more community-led coalition. And at the risk of incurring the wrath of some letter writers, I do want to be responsive to the comments of people who said, "Oh, don't you dare use this visioning report and try to take a position on the Kelseyville name change." If I were to look at the recommendations that are not that granular, the greatest need, I think, to continue to solicit public input on this issue because right now the county is in kind of a passive position on that. One of the letter writers said, "You should be seeking the opinion of all community members on this particular issue." And I happen to agree with that. So we have not had opportunity and I want to make sure I stay on the agenda item. But the most urgent thing I see, and I'm also citing back to the 2021 Enabling Resolution where this was passed, the creation of this, is we're supposed to, as a board, look for relevant solutions for any social injustices as they may come to light. Well, clearly, the injustices that have happened in the early history of Kelseyville have come to light in no uncertain terms. Further, we're supposed to take meaningful actions and activities that will build bridges where there may be walls. And where I see that conversation right now is a bunch of walls, not a lot of dialogue. And one reason I mention that is I found such power in the visioning forums. And it did take money and it did take a consultant. But having that structured dialogue in a place where everyone is guaranteed their safety or at least made cognizant that we're supposed to speak respectfully in those forums, that's the kind of dialogue and that's the kind of venue and that's the kind of format, I think, could potentially not make everyone happy on the name change issue. I don't think that's possible, but could certainly move the needle to a point of greater understanding. And I think this county can and probably should commit resources to that if this board would agree with that and if the people in the audience have some input on that. That's the most immediate need that I can see. The county stuff, the internal stuff, DEI, I think between the Labor Department and all that, federal and state laws, we're going to be driving the DEI bus on the county side for quite a while from various sources. But in terms of providing useful opportunities for public engagement on a divisive issue, I think an ad hoc committee supported with something similar to what Nicole did with our visioning forum could be a very powerful tool of healing, even if it doesn't come to any ultimate resolution. It gives us a platform to have more structured discussions about that particular issue.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm going to start in the Zoom room. Sally Peterson.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm Aminah Hehoney Sally Kallakut. I'm an enrolled member at Middletown Rancheria and I also work for Big Valley Rancheria. I had the honor of serving on this committee. Put in a lot of time and energy. We all did. So I'm happy to see it come to a fruitful ending. And I do appreciate a lot of the discussion from the honorable board. And I do want to just make a couple of comments. The reason that I was so passionate and wanted to participate in this forum, in this committee, was I raised two multiracial sons in this county. I've lived here for almost 25 years and witnessed firsthand the inequities, I guess I would say, that my sons endured, living in this county. So, you know, it was important to do this work because I saw the need. I am very hopeful that change will happen. And change is happening slowly, but it is happening. And I will comment on, in Middletown, our Middletown Art Center is actually going to be painting the water towers using Pomo basket designs. And that was a huge accomplishment towards DEI efforts. And very proud that that's happening in our Middletown community. I did want to thank Matthew for his guidance. And a lot of times he was herding cats when we were trying to put together meetings. So I wanted to give a special shout out to him. And also our consultants that helped us through this process and all of the community members that participated and attended our meetings. It was quite an experience and I'm glad that I was able to do that. I wanted to thank Supervisor Sabatier for his comments. And I think coming from this, we just want to make sure that the comments and all of the intentions and creating, whether it's an ad hoc committee or anything that comes from this meeting, that it's meaningful and that it's just not talk, that things change and things happen and everyone sees the need for it. And I feel our Board of Supervisors feel, see that as well and feel that. So I wanted to thank you all for your time. And just to mention also, you know, there's a lot of large companies, a lot of other governments that actually create departments and DEI coordinators. And that might be something to think about as well when you're thinking about how to move forward from this. So thank you very much for your time. Kawika.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Fred Breones.
Hello. Hi, Fred Breones, Big Valley Rancheria, Band of Pomo Indians Tribal Member, Basket Weaver and Healer. I'm sorry, I didn't, thank you for this meeting. First and foremost, thank you to all the work. I didn't come to the meeting because I'm afraid, really, like many people are in that room, afraid of who, white supremacy that will retaliate. So I don't come to the meetings. To show you beauty, I'm all the way here in Hawaii. I hope you could see my screen photo where our tribe has the petro glyph all the way here in Hawaii, where, again, it's just beauty. And in our area of Lake County, where we've been there for over 10,000 years, that area was called Lilic. And that is my family. And Kamut on Buckingham, that is our family that's been there for 20,000 years. And the story happened one time, I'll tell you to me, that when I was up in Upper Lake riding my motorcycles one day, there was two white kids that tried to stab me with the screwdrivers. And lucky thing, my white grandfather, Buddy Davis, he picked up a two-by-four and he hit one of them right over the face, broke his nose.
Can I redirect you to, if I can redirect you to talk about the report and the recommendations, please?
Well, I'm trying to get into that. Don't interrupt me, please. So now, see, there's this fear now. So that area, Lilic, there, that was our home. Now, then Kelsey came. And do you see how now there's this division where it's hard to live with us? They'd never known how to live with us and seen a business world that I have a business and to have any type of racist remark or racist review, now it's especially white supremacy, it's being frowned upon. And, you know, a real world example where our tribe owns many businesses and we even own that Lake County Tribal Health. And somebody was recently removed because of their racist remarks, their racist views. And see, now going to you, board, here. Now there's a reporter in the room that they're watching and they're going to write a story and they're going to see how you vote. And now it really tests, not the Indians, but the white people. Which type of white are you? Are you the one with the blonde hair and the blue eyes that heals like Jesus? Or are you the white devil like Kelsey Stone, Lyons, Rudy Davis that murdered?
Mr. Breones, I need you to focus on the...
...this opportunity to be able to speak my voice.
Mr. Breones?
Because we're always being cut off like this from able to speak.
But you're not speaking on the agenda.
The trauma, the generational trauma. So I support the name change and to end white supremacy.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a...
Community forum conversation.
Little difficult. I have no further hands up in Zoom. And we are going to open it up for the public in the chamber, please. And I do want to apologize to everybody. We are way behind schedule, but I want to make sure and hear everybody. So those who are waiting for an item afterwards, I'm apologizing to you. People came here specifically for this item and I do not want to restrict their speech. So please hang with us. And also, please note that for item 6.9, those of you who came here for that item, I also apologize, but we are going to be pulling that item and moving it to August 6. So just to give you a heads up, so you're not waiting around for something that's not going to happen. And I deeply apologize for those abrupt changes. We're going to continue with public comment. Please come on up to the microphone. Thank you for your patience. And if we can make sure to stay on the topic of the report and the recommendations in the report.
Hi, my name is Lorna Sides and I live in the town that I like to call Conocti. And I'm the proponent of the name change from Kelseyville to Conocti. I want to commend the Lake County Community Visioning Forum for looking past any personal interests they may have and in keeping the name, in keeping the name. And for acknowledging and supporting the healing of our local people, indigenous, from the intergenerational trauma they have been living for over 150 years. I also want to thank the committee for acknowledging the importance of renaming Kelseyville to help Lake County residents feel respected and included for all Lake County residents. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors of Lake County for adopting the goal of promoting tolerance, respect, equity and inclusion in our county. The US BGN, the United States Board on Geographic Names, and many Lake County citizens have repeatedly requested opinions from the Lake County Board of Supervisors regarding the name change.
I want to make sure again that we're not discussing a whole different topic. The topic is the recommendations and please don't do a very wide circle to get to the point of the topic at hand.
Okay. So, but I would say I am requesting at this point, as the BGN and many of the citizens have, for the county to chime in on the name change, write a personal letter, write a, you know, get together as a group and write a letter, however that's done, and at least give recommendations or say that you're not going to give a recommendation. At least get some word into the BGN on how you feel about the name change. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
And thank you for, thank you, Michael, for acknowledging how important this is and how it needs to be addressed countywide and taking people's feelings into consideration. Thank you.
Rachel White, Kelseyville. I was just wondering if you could bring up page 14 of what was published in the agenda and make a distinction between that document and what was presented today and how we are to differentiate that between what is specifically stated as to support the efforts to rename Kelseyville.
If we can go ahead and put up page 14? And did you have a comment, Mr. Rothstein?
I'm happy to clarify that if that's helpful.
If you'd like, I think I can make the clarification as well. Page 14, as far as I'm concerned, is a summary of comments that were heard and discussed during the forum. Just like we've heard some things today from the public, those comments will not disappear. They will be in the public record. And this was a summary of a report of those forums, not a summary of the recommendations of what the board is looking to take action on. And so the question that was asked during the forums were, "How do you define respect? What gets in the way of you and your family getting your needs met in Lake County? What history must be acknowledged to begin community healing? And what would support Lake County residents feeling respected?" And all of those questions were asked in each one of the forums, which engaged discussion in the small groups that we all broke out into. I know I was part of, I think, four or five-person group when I was in the city of Clear Lake. And those were some of the themes and responses that were provided and hence a part of the summary of the report. And again, just to clarify, not within the last pages, if you can scroll down. Nope, keep going to the, right there, we have recommendations. And if you keep scrolling down, you'll see the internal and the external recommendations, which we've already read out loud individually. And not detailed within those recommendations.
Is it possible to get a breakdown of the demographics and the representation that was present in all the meetings from Kelseyville specifically?
I don't think we tracked that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we don't have that data. We have, for a lack of better data, there are videos where you can make assumptions, I guess, as to the demographics, but you will never know the exact demographics. assumptions, I guess, as to the demographics, but you will never know the exact demographics. And it's just that we didn't track that data. We didn't ask any personal information of individuals within the forums. We came in, we introduced ourselves, but there was no request for age, sex, gender, ethnicity, race, or anything like that. Next public comment, who wishes to speak on this item? Please come on up.
I think the young man who spoke had some true feelings. And I think he was shut down. And those true feelings are what needs to be solved instead of ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. We need to stay on topic. We're already way behind time. And that's the reason we have an agenda and we write out exactly what will be discussed, because it is actually illegal for us to get involved in a discussion that is not on our agenda.
Thank you, Bruno.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green, I want to thank you for what you said. I think that's exactly what needs to happen. Unfortunately, through this process and this report, you know, Kelseyville wasn't approached or discussed about that issue. But you talked about humbling. This whole process has been very humbling. Bruno and E J both talked about, you know, letting their guards down and getting to know our communities. I've been to some different places that I thought I would never go to. And I was welcome there, spoke to a couple of supervisors there and really felt, felt welcome. So there's nothing in this report other than the, you know, the recommendation, you know, support efforts to rename Kelseyville, you know, and the supervisors, you know, we want it out of there. Listening to Bruno is probably not going to happen. It's probably not going to get removed.
And just to clarify, it's not a recommendation. It's just a comment made by somebody that was recorded and reported within the final report. Please continue.
Yep. And I just want you to know, I mean, from our, our Save the Name group is a small group. There's voices from both sides. You know, the gentleman that spoke earlier, you know, I guess probably described me to a T, you know, but when I look back to my community and the people that know me, they don't, that's not who I am. And, and man, this is tough. And that's all the more reason for what you guys are doing here. So I support all this. I'm getting to learn about it. I'm getting to know about it. Sort of new to me, you know, we've been trying to have conversations. We've been reaching out to tribal leaders, supervisors. But back to what Mr. Green said, you know, if you need people to talk to, you need a community moke, power from the community. Your K B A is just like the Lower Lake Group, you know, we're not governed by anybody. We're, I don't know if anybody was at Bacon Fest Sunday, but, you know, 50 volunteers and thousands of people walking through our friendly country town. And that's really who we are, our Save the Name group, that's the people we are. And we're here to help bridges and walls, as I've read that 10 times today. And the bridges need some work. But we are open to conversation. There's some great people here that know Kelseyville and we're all ears and we're here for you guys. So there's, there's, there's these far outsider things that get said, you know, I've seen my name, the logo of my business plastered on things. It's not super comfortable, but, you know, I'm a big boy. I can get through that. But we're trying to shut those outsides out and really focus on respect, forgiveness, healing. And we're trying to learn that too. And somehow I hope we can get there. I really do. So anyways, that's what I had to say.
What's your name?
My name's Mark.
Mark.
Borgesani, Kelseyville resident, long time.
And I think you speak to something that's really important and was part of the forums is, one of the greatest things and scariest things in life is to make yourself vulnerable and to let your guard down and try something new. Go into a different place. And I think that's where we actually learn the most, greatest opportunities. I'm going to continue with public comment if that's okay? Is it specifically related to the comments or?
It was just basically that the, that the forums were meant as a starting point. They weren't meant to be comprehensive for touching base with everybody in Lake County. It was a starting point. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you. Please.
Alan Fletcher. I thank the Visioning Committee and the wonderful work they did. And I do hope it continues one form or another. Respect to Supervisor Green's suggestion that the hot issue would best be done by a county-controlled group, I think is wise. Do not open the floodgates. You'll have 7,000 people in orange shirts rushing in. So structure it, have the groups make reports and comments and have a sensible discussion. So I endorse your efforts and I did in my written submission and comment, request that you send this report to the B G N A T A. Without comment if need be, just that you received it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next.
Oops. I've shrunk. Good morning. My name is Marilyn Holden Reed. I live in Kelseyville. This is an important day. This is all a big deal. I have been aware of the Community Visioning Forum Committee for some time, and I have read your report and our respect. I've heard your stories. I hope you hear ours. I'm a bit puzzled as one of the tenants of this committee is inclusiveness. And yet there is not a member from Kelseyville that's on this committee. To my knowledge, no one from Kelsey was invited to sit at this table. Since we are in Kelseyville, and since Kelseyville has not been represented, I take umbrage that there's a recommendation on page 14 that says, let's support the change of Kelseyville. Inclusiveness. Maybe somebody from Kelseyville was invited to sit at your table, but I wasn't aware of it. I was, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do you want to repeat one more time that that was not a recommendation? That was a comment from a public member who was not censored to say what they wanted to say, just like we, granted, I tried to interrupt one speaker but wasn't trying to censor and trying to lead him back in one direction. Ms. Farrell, if you can speak in the microphone, please. I'm so sorry.
I just want to make one comment for real clarity. Page 14 of this report is a recap of what was said at community meetings. That's page 14. Page 18 are the recommendations that the committee is giving to the Board of Supervisors today. On page 18, the word Kelseyville is not there. There is no recommendation from this committee that talks about, specifically about Kelseyville. On page 14, the word Kelseyville came up in community discussion. And it's only a recap of what was said by the community at that particular point in time. So I think there was a confusion in what was said on page 14 out in the communities and what this body is presenting to the Board of Supervisors. That's on page 18. So there was a little, I think there's a little bit confusion about that. 14 is the general public at our forums. Page 18 is the recommendations to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Ms. Dolores. Ms. Farrell. Yes, please. It'll be on.
Elaine Brown, just community person, educator. You know, just speaking to the Kelseyville thing very briefly, I've dealt with two historical things, name changes that happened in my life. One was the Paul Paul Theater, which is a theater in Fresno County, the fair, that they tried to change the name. I happened to work for that immigrant family from Armenia. And it does something viscerally to you, as you can see in this room. Also, Yosemite, Curry Village was all changed. Okay, but, you know, they just changed all the names in Yosemite.
I'm gonna interrupt for a second. It's either you like the recommendations that are on there, or you don't like the recommendations, or what changes would you like to make to the recommendations? We're not getting into the conversation of what is happening outside of this topic in the name change of Kelseyville that is out there.
So did the other people-
This is about whether it's a recommendation or not. Currently, it is not a recommendation.
So the other people got to speak on Kelseyville.
And I'm trying to get this conversation to be a little bit more streamlined, because nobody seems to be listening.
All right, I'll streamline it fast. When you name change a historical place, you deal with people's emotions. And sometimes there's reverse discrimination, which I've witnessed in life. And we need to be very careful, as you see in this room, with people's emotions. Thank you.
So it sounds like you have no issues with the current recommendations, which that's not in it. Please, who's next?
May I speak on Zoom? I'm sorry.
Please, Georgina.
Yeah, I just wanted to say with great respect to everyone who's speaking, the Community Visioning Forum was countywide. It wasn't just specific to Lake Forest or specific to a certain geographical area. So when these forums were promoted for the public to attend, it was countywide. We did our best to promote that via press releases, social media, emails, newsletter outreach, you know. But we can't always reach everyone in Lake County, but I just wanted to respond to that comment that Kelseyville residents were not invited because this was a countywide effort. I also just want to say the Kelseyville name change, of course, it's an important matter. It's very contentious. But I don't want that to take away from the work of the Community Visioning Forums. There were so many things that we covered and diversity, inclusion, and, sorry, D E I in general. It's, it's beyond just the name change. The name change is very important. We want to respect our native peoples. But I just implore the public to also keep a wider open mind that there are a lot of topics within diversity and diversity concerns in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
My name's Verge Blanchard. And, you know, I noticed a somewhat collective emotion when it was mentioned about white supremacy. And this is directly as far as a concern, I think, on the name change. I don't use those terms.
Sir, sir, recommendations.
Yes, I recommend a name change. And the reasons is because we're having a change in demographics. It's been going on steadily. And not only is it offensive, it's sort of like in a family with the child molester, the family throws that person out.
Sir.
So I'm recommending that the name-
You're asking for it to be in the recommendations.
Yes, I'm asking the name change to be in the recommendation.
We're gonna leave it at that.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to really be restrictive on, there's no changing anybody's mind right now that currently it's not in the recommendations. We're talking about the report and the recommendations. If you want to talk about something else, that is not the place to talk about it. If you want us not to put it in the recommendations, by all means, step up there and let us know you don't want us to put it in the recommendations. If you want to, you can step up and do that too. But we're not going to talk about the topic itself. That is not what's on our agenda. I really feel like this is being utilized as a way to discuss something that this was not meant to discuss.
Hi, Barbara Green, Kelseyville resident. And I'm just concerned that this report will make its way to the B G N. And that's exactly what they had in mind when that was put into the comments. I understand it's not a recommendation. I understand page 14 is just comments. But the fact that it is in this report and it's going to be sent to the B G N who is making the decision is not okay.
So I don't know where that comes from.
It will get, it will make its way to them. This report was paid for by the county. That's our tax dollars. And it's not fair that this is in this report. And it will definitely make its way to the B G N. There's just no doubt about it. I know you may not be sending it yourselves personally, but someone will. And I just, I feel like that's wrong.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Appreciate all the work you've done. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mary Morris, Kelseyville Appliance, Kelseyville. Been a resident for 36 years. Yes, this will be about Kelseyville, but on a little different angle. We know that you, the five supervisors, are going to be asked where you stand. They want your opinion from your district. And that's fine. None of us have a problem with that. The problem I personally have with it is we are not being asked by our supervisor. We've been told neutral, and I know you're gonna try to dismiss this.
Recommendation or not.
So my recommendation is that the five supervisors come and meet with Kelseyville residents only and talk to us and get our opinions very respectfully. We respect everything you guys have to go through. There's a lot of work. I have worked with our local natives for years in our business, never had an issue. It's always been so respectful on both sides. And I have greatly appreciated that. What I do ask is for you to meet with, because we are the only ones that will be affected by the name change. That's why it's very important to each of us. Everything in this study is important, that it all has its place. But for us, the big thing is Kelseyville, we are a very poor community, a lot of elderly. They have to change everything. I don't have to tell you guys, you know that. When you change a name of a town, your driver's license, everything. Again, I'll get back.
Your recommendation.
So my recommendation is that the five of you, please, I invite you to come to Kelseyville, meet with Kelseyville residents only. And I say that because there's people coming from all over that don't live in Kelseyville and they won't be affected.
Thank you for putting it in a recommendation.
Thank you for listening.
Any other comments? I need you to go to the microphone. No, but nobody can hear you on the TV or the internet.
Okay, not everyone will hear me. My name is Frances. I live in that village of Kelseyville. And the reason I came here is to speak about peace. I didn't know why I came here today, but I didn't know all this agenda was gonna happen today. But it's, I would love to see more happen with what you have presented today through your forum.
That sounds like a recommendation.
Well, I would, and there's probably things to check off and there's things to make more important. But I would like to see the piece of it come together in how we speak with each other, how we want to know each other, how we represent whenever we're walking down the street. So back to that proclamation in 2012, which was 12 years ago, which was, I don't know if we were all on the same terms. Were you, were you all here 12 years ago?
None of us.
I was here for that.
Yeah, I was too. And so, and the year before that. So these things were signed into place with an attitude to pass it on, to create something for everyone, businesses, all us folks, the lake, the air. So learning to actively listen is very important. And not to throw stones, not to hurt anyone, be mindful of what we're doing. But the summer of peace meant a lot to me. And I'm not just an old hippie.
So again, your recommendation is to go back to that, go back to that proclamation.
I would love to see more happen with this, this declaration or whatever you're calling it. So thank you. And thank you for paying for it because we needed it.
Thank you.
Yes, we did.
Any other comments? I see no more comments and no more hands in Zoom. I want to highlight one comment that was made. And for a reason or another, there was nobody representing Kelseyville in this. But I know that I think that's one recommendation. But I know that, I think that's one recommendation that I would like to look at is ensuring that there's diversity, both geographical and racial, ethnic diversity within our committees that we create. I know I brought it up before about our committees being maybe too centralized in one area versus others. But I think that it's important to get different voices and different perspectives because different communities have different experiences and therefore bring a different perspective on working towards making things better here in Lake County. And so that's something that I know I've been trying to do. I've been asking, and we've gotten some great information from HR with giving us more of our diversity information. But I know that's something that I will continue to work for. And that's something that I would like to add to the list of recommendations if my colleagues agree with that addition.
It's on there, though, isn't it? It is, it's on as a recommendation.
Well, look at that.
Yeah.
Ma ba ya.
What exactly do you mean? What's on there?
It says--
To invite everyone, or are we specifying a group?
I mean, I say, I see here ensure representation of marginalized community members on all appointed advisory bodies. But to me, it's not just marginalized community members. We want all, as much potential geographic and different perspectives. And I don't think it means anything of the opposite in what it's saying. But I think that's the portion that I'm being told it's already on there. But I know it's important that we don't miss out on representing District 5 or representing District 3 or any other district and that we try our best, try to be as diverse as possible when we're creating our committees. And right now, we don't really get a-- I know I asked for it and looking into it, but we don't get a report of who's on the committee as we're adding more people to the committee. And are we not creating more diversity? Are we actually really just making it one, one group, one demographic, and one geographical location? And I think we need to, we can do better. And I think we're trying to do better as well. So the fact that it's there, it may not be worded exactly the same, but I think it means the same thing. Yes.
Can I, I just want to kind of reflect back of the purposes of these forums were to listen to the voices that usually are, have been oppressed over time and have not had an opportunity to be held and heard in public forums because of that overarching, that overarching theme that came around safety. There were people that didn't even feel-- again, were willing to meet with us in private. So I think one of the things about making sure that there is a diversity of representation on those committees moving forward-- that was an internal recommendation, correct? For the county, for the committees?
It is on the internal.
Was to make sure that the voices that have been oppressed over time are being elevated to the equal, if, sometimes even more because we live in a culture that has not, that has not listened to those voices. And we've made decisions that have gotten us to this moment by not listening to those voices. So making sure that those voices are elevated and heard, if not at equal representation, but even more, to do some correction to what has happened in our, in our culture.
And I appreciate your comment. And I think, I agree with the sentiment. But I want to make sure that our committees are a reflection of our community and everyone given the same opportunity to be safe in order to speak and have their voices heard. And I think that that's what we need to work towards is ensuring that we create the safest of places for everybody to be vulnerable because that's what people fear is that creating a vulnerable moment of speaking truth and not being heard in the positive way.
Mm-hmm.
My apologies, I just need to make one clarifying comment just to reorient that the recommendations are the recommendations of the committee at this stage. What's before you are the recommendations of the committee. And so what your board chooses to do in taking those and coming to your own decisions are distinct from what the recommendations of the committee are as written in the report. So just wanted to draw that distinction.
And I know that we had talked about not continuing the committee because your work is done, but creating a new committee and looking at, focusing on ensuring to stay the course towards, ensuring that we lift those that have historically been on the bottom and ensuring that everyone around Lake County has the same opportunities throughout because that's not the case at this moment in time.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Are you guys in agreement? Supervisor Green, did you have any further comments? By the way, close-- I closed public comment, just to make sure. Did you have any further comments?
Well, on the internal stuff, we already try to ensure representation for different community groups and demographics. Doesn't mean that there's always interest in serving on that. When somebody does get appointed to an advisory body, they generally land in Brown Act land, and you get in a fairly structured speaking mode of people up here and people out there. So it's a dialogue of sorts. But what I've been learning through the visioning forums is that's not comfortable for everybody. Some people take a little time to process their own thoughts. Some people do get scared when they're speaking in public. And you need to buy time for people to get their own truth out, but also allow time for those active listening skills to apply when other people are speaking. But that's what I found most powerful about the visioning forum. So to, and I appreciate the difficulty of your task, Chair Sabatier, in trying to keep people on the agenda subject. But a lot of people here did want to talk about the name change. I think there is a recommendation in here that we could consider acting upon, and that would be convene an ad hoc committee that would engage on that specific issue and hopefully bring back a recommendation to this board about whether to take a position with Board of Geographic names. To Georgina's point, it is not by any means the only DEI issue facing Lake County residents. But it is by far the most prominent and the one that keeps filling up my inbox. So I have to keep emptying out my inbox for my server crashes. The power of those visioning forums. And I wish more people had been there. They were noticed publicly. So if there weren't a lot of Kelseyville people there, guess what? There weren't a lot of Lakeport people there either, you know. So, but through repetition, we can get the input that we need, you know. I remember Kelseyville High when they dedicated the mural. It was beautiful for the people that were there. There were a lot of Kelseyville people who weren't there. So I don't want to take prior opportunities and say, well, that's all the visioning we're going to do today. Thanks. Here we have a very specific issue that would be appropriate to a time-limited, purpose-limited, ad hoc committee that would engage with community partners on a specific DEI issue. And maybe from that effort, maybe it would help spin up a community-led coalition that would take on that work of healing, not just in Kelseyville, but the county as a whole. So I do think, even though the comments here were not necessarily supportive of the idea or submitted within the framework of our external, community-focused recommendation. But that would be my request. In the absence of any other movement or any other process, which I have not been informed of, you know, would this board support similar to, like we did with the visioning forums, creating a budget, creating a process, doing an RFP if we have to, to help the community engage in productive dialogue on this subject as opposed to the walls and the destructive dialogue that's going on right now?
So for me, that would take precedence over the things that were listed that we were really looking into from the beginning. I mean, for me, that shouldn't just be pushed to the top when we're talking about things that we haven't been doing. And it's not even about that. We're talking about these other things that are focused, recommended for training, for education, you know, talking about this representation in all communities. It says that in here. So I don't know where all of these other statements are coming from. It says all appointed advisory committees, all folks. It's always been an open invitation despite, you know, who came. I just, I want to stick to, I mean, that's fine. I mean, if you want to do that, we can look at that too. But my, my focus would be on these internally focused recommendations. And someone said something, I, I don't know if we're still taking public comment or--
No, we closed public comment.
All right, so I would like to focus on these internally focused recommendations that we have been given and see what we can do about those. If we want to talk about what Supervisor Green is talking about and other folks are talking about, that's fine too. But are we going to ensure that we recruit, hire, and retain BIPOC staff? Are we going to put together an actual internal committee and add folks that we designate from the community at large to be a part of this? I know we at one time in these discussions of these visioning forums talked about having a group to ensure that they are looking at the policy that's put in place. Just like we have other policy-driven ad hoc groups or whatever you want to call them in place to look and see if it fits that bill, if that makes any sense. So I just want to make sure we, I think that's what we were put together to do is look at those, is create these recommendations and put them to fruition so that we can actually address those issues.
And I appreciate that comment. And I think it fits right into my belief as well that we need to start with ourselves and make those internal changes before we ever go into the external and start asking others to make those changes. We have to prove that we can do those things too. And we can do it simultaneously, but we have to also make sure that we're looking at ourselves. I don't know that-- I don't know that I want to just give a blanket of we're going to do what's on the recommendations versus bring back a strategy, bring back a measurable-- what are we measuring to make sure that we're seeing the changes occur? Because right now, I'd be asking staff to move with the recommendation without, with asking them to do all of the work that doesn't necessarily, do they know exactly what we're asking for? And what's in the-- I think we have broad statements of ideas of what to do. And I think the ad hoc committee can refine those statements and come back with a very specific strategy on how to go about each one of those recommendations. And then afterwards, we can ask staff to go ahead and take those on. Supervisor Pisces?
That was my question at the very end of the presentation is here we have this long list of recommendations. It's very broad. We need to figure out a strategy. We need to figure out the priorities that are there that we want to move forward with. So my question is, how do we get to that? Is this something that we form an internal ad hoc committee to work on? Is this something that we, we can't really-- I mean, we can ask staff to do this, but it feels like there needs to be the participation of the supervisors that worked on the, on the recommendations because you were on the committee.
Yeah.
And this is the most important. This has been going on since 2021. So I don't want to lose sight of this work. And I'm deeply grateful for all of you who committed a great amount of time to work on this. So is it an ad hoc committee that is assigned to bring this back? An internal ad hoc committee or with some of the partners, if you're willing to do a little bit more, to help us develop that strategy on which to start to implement? That's my question for the board.
My answer is yes.
Yes, okay. And we don't have that agendized today. So we'll have to bring that back.
CAO Parker?
Oh, she made the statement I was going to make about not, it's not being agendized. But we at an administration will put together our recommendations and options for the board to consider for, on July 9th, with your permission, of course.
That works for me. And that's our next meeting after this one. Any further comments? And I will just say, I don't agree with the recommendation from Supervisor Green. There is a separate avenue and pathway that is working towards better understanding how to bring that to the public. And I think that we need to let that pathway continue. It's not a pathway towards a solution or a pathway towards a response. It's a pathway of figuring out what the federal and state agencies are actually planning to do and what their needs are and how it is that we can come together and make that happen. So that is a work in progress. And I would prefer not to deviate that path or complicate that path anymore. Supervisor Green?
Well, not having any knowledge of that any more than anybody else in this room does, is there any timeline for that to come?
Well, you haven't had a conversation with me, and this is my district and something I've been working on for a long time and have a lot of conversations with a lot of people in this room. So there are things that you're probably not aware of because of the Brown Act.
Okay. Well, so it sounds like we have a game plan of sorts for the internal stuff. I guess I may be more interested in the external stuff than-- I don't want to say I'm more interested, but it sounds like we aren't going to do an ad hoc to adjust the name change. So my question is, do any of these external recommendations--
And I think that the ad hoc committee can look at both the internal and the external. It shouldn't have to be limited at that point. That gives them the entire recommendations to look into and provide more detailed action plan, strategy, and implementation.
So you're saying the--
Because we can, we can say one of these, but if we, if we don't provide implementation for our staff, then we might just be waiting for something that we'll never have. And I did not mean any offense to our staff.
Oh, no. I was just going to ask a clarifying question, if that's okay.
Please.
So Supervisor Green, what he was proposing was looking to work on the healing outside of the name change, which is outside of the perv-- I mean, it sounds like it's in other hands. And whatever side it comes down on, the healing that I think I'm hearing you speak to is something that the forums, like a forum itself could, could, regardless of the outcome, right? Is that, you're speaking about the healing of it, and we're also over here saying there's a trajectory and a pathway that is happening that is out of our control. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'll go ahead and take that. In my opinion, what I was hearing was to open up a forum for speaking on the subject matter. And that subject matter is being worked on, meeting with BGN, meeting with the, what are they called?
Kagan.
Kagan, to figure out, are they coming here to have these conversations? Are we left alone to have these conversations? What exactly are the questions that we need to answer in these conversations? Do they have any funding for these conversations? We're having those conversations right now to better understand their process. And I'll just be blunt, they have no idea what their process is. And so that makes it that much more difficult for us.
You're getting off topic.
Yeah.
And thank you, that really clarifies what I think--
And so I think we just need to move past that at this moment in time. From what I'm hearing, recommendation, July 9th, ad hoc committee, to create an ad hoc committee based on the internal and external recommendations that we have before us from this final report.
Yes.
And I have a consensus. And thank you very much. Really appreciate everyone's time. And even though the conversation aimed for almost one specific thing, I want to thank for the overall dialogue and the overall work that has been done towards ensuring that we are doing better tomorrow than we were yesterday and ensuring that people have access to us and people are able to voice their opinions and get the services they need and feel safer, no matter where they are.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to take up item 6.9, just to move it on. 5.8, we're going to take up item 5.8. And so let me read the item. "Thank you, CAO Parker, for keeping me on task. Approve Health Services Request to Apply for California Department of Justice Tobacco Grant Program Fund in the Amount of $500,000." And Supervisor Green, you pulled this item.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. As explained in the staff report, this is tied to the tobacco retail license ordinance that is proposed under a different agenda item and which I think you said was being continued to July. It's a little cart before the horse to me, but does highlight the point that to the extent there is going to be a local enforcement, it's unfunded at this point. And without having greater confidence or knowledge of how and when the tobacco retail license ordinance is going to move forward, it seemed either premature or not worthy of consent agenda placement to apply for this grant funding without even having some basic idea of what the four corners of the grant. I do appreciate the fact sheet and the RFP, and I appreciate there is a deadline coming up, if I understand correctly.
Yes. The deadline is June 28th, and--
You can speak in the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Anthony Arden, Health Services Director. Yes, the deadline is June 28th, so we are kind of a little under the gun for this. And this is directly tied to the enforcement aspect if tobacco retail licensing is passed in this county.
Even if it's not passed, we can still do the enforcement under the state laws through the DOJ grant.
All right. And so, we, and first of all, I want to say that it's, we're not going to apply for the full $500,000. We're just going to apply up to $500,000 based on what we would need to do the enforcement. It's a three-year grant cycle, and this would help, again, do community education with our retailers, help build partnerships with local law enforcement for the aspect of it, help pay for staff time in health services and local law enforcement time as well. So that's why we're coming to you for this approval, so we can move forward with this.
And we have been in contact with the chiefs to do a letter of intent to collaborate with us for the minor decoy operations here locally in Lake County. So this is something that they used to do as part of their explorer program. The officers would do the decoy operations in their jurisdiction, and since COVID, they've lost their explorer program in most of our law enforcement agencies. So we would partner with them to do that component of this department justice grant.
Thank you very much for your summary. Any questions or comments?
So just to clarify, I think you already heard it. So we are not bound to do a TRL to take advantage of these grant funds. They can be used for existing state law enforcement.
Correct.
Okay. But in this highly competitive grant process, obviously, if we have a TRL in place, that would be one of the scoring criteria that would make us rank higher.
It depends on the circumstance, so we cannot use it to supplant an already established policy. So because this grant is happening prior to us having a TRL ordinance in place, they will still allow us to do the enforcement activities that we outline in our application.
And other than this grant, I know you cited it in the prior item and maybe this here, so where is the state, where is the state enforcement? You know, why are we kind of reduced to going for grant funds for enforcement?
So the state, the records that I was able to find came in 2014. At that time, all of the retailers that they observed through their decoy operations failed. Again, in 2018, all of them failed in Lake County. To my knowledge, they have not been back since the 2018, but the law states that they will do inspections based on complaints and randoms. So when that happens, we're not notified of when it's going to happen. We have to wait for the results to be published online from their database. The other thing is that we're very rural, so does it happen more often in Sacramento, San Francisco, quite very possible, LA? But what we have as part of the tobacco-funded projects is what's called a tobacco youth survey, where it's not a decoy operation, where they instill punishment or violations, but it's to provide data throughout the state of what's really happening because we know that the state enforcement is not happening as often as it, you know, we believe it should. So we do have some results that are regional on that, the tobacco purchase surveys, but we know that everybody is stretched thin. And if we're able to apply for funding that directly assists our community to protect the youth, you know, we don't want to miss that opportunity.
That's ATF that did those?
I believe it is in collaboration with CDPH.
Okay. All right, thank you. My only comment is they're not stretched thin, they're just not enforcing it.
Which is, could be true as well.
Any other comments or question? Okay, I'm absolutely in favor of moving forward, TRL, no TRL. Again, the data that you provided, 2014, 2018, and nothing has changed. Therefore, we're still living within the status quo. This has the ability to change some of those things, and looking forward to August 6th for the rest of those conversations. There's nothing further? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Please come on up. Thank you for your patience.
Brock Falken, excuse me, Brock Falkenberg, Lake County Superintendent of Schools. The team of superintendents came down here to express their desire to move forward with a TRL. In light of that being pulled from the agenda, what we see is of great concern to all of us as school leaders in the lack of enforcement of existing regulations related to sale of tobacco and vaping products to our minors. So we would encourage you to move forward with any sort of enhanced enforcement that we can implement at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, and again, thank you for your patience. Any further comments from the public? I see no hands in the Zoom room and no one getting up in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve the Health Service Request to Apply for California Department of Justice Tobacco Grant Programs in the amount of $500,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So we're going to do, oh, let me see. We're just going to do one more item, and then we're going to take a lunch. 6.9 is just to, at least to make the announcement that we are going to move that. Do we need to do a time certain, or is it going to be advertised? And so, so that one will be moved. Most likely, it will be August 6th, but it will be notified in our local newspapers and local media. And just want to open it up for the public to speak on that movement of the item. And since there's no one raising their hand in Zoom or getting up in the chamber, we'll go ahead and move on. I really apologize for those that just walked in. We are very much behind schedule. My fault as the chair for letting that happen. And we are going to take our lunch, and we will be back here at 1:45 PM to continue our meeting. And thank you for your patience, and we'll see you at 1:45. All right, welcome back, everyone. We are on item 6.10, our 11:00 AM item. I'll probably stop reading the times just because we're so off. Consideration of MOU between Lakosan and Earth Foundries, Inc. for the operation and placement of a mobile paralysis unit in Middletown at the west end of the Middletown wastewater treatment plant and authorize the chair to sign the MOU. And we have Director Harder coming up for this item. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
That's really, oh, there you go.
As the chair mentioned, this is an item for consideration of an MOU between Earth Foundries and Lake County Sanitation Districts. This is kind of an augment to the air curtain incinerator that's already currently down at Middletown and is modeled on the same MOU. That is a collaboration between Cal Fire, South Lake Fire Protection District, and the county to help reduce the woody biomass that's in the county due to the dead and dying trees and lots of other reasons. This is an augment to that, and it's a collaboration between Clerk, Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, PG&E, Earth Foundries, Lake County Sanitation District, and County Admin. We've all been kind of collaborating. So there's PG&E funding, I believe it's $500,000, in order to move forward with this. And the goal is to reduce or eliminate between 2,000 and 3,000 tons of woody biomass. So the stockpiling's already begun down there. And this particular, this unit doesn't just create ash. So the air curtain incinerator just creates ash. This unit actually creates a usable byproduct. This will create biochar, and it's about a 10-to-1 reduction. So if we put in 3,000 tons of woody biomass, we'll get about 300 tons of biochar out of it. And then that biochar can be used in agriculture with further refinement into activated carbon. It could be used at water treatment plants, for filtration devices, wastewater treatment plants. So there's a lot of potential here to take what is, you know, a nuisance with all the woody biomass and use it as a resource within the county. The representatives from Earth Foundries are here. If you've got any questions specifically about the process, they do have other units going in the Bay Area, so this isn't a pilot program. It's piloted up in Lake County, but it is proven technology, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on this item? Supervisor Simon?
Go ahead, Jessica.
Go ahead.
Well, obviously, it's in my district as far as the conversation goes, but all the heavy lifting has been done by Jessica and Terry and everybody else on the conversation, and also Scott, moving it forward. I know that the initial conversation was, do we think this would work in Lake County? I think it brings a great opportunity for us here as we continue to grow. The area that we're talking about, too, as you said, already has a project on there, but it's also been multiple cleanup areas. The 175 project, we, you know, stacked a lot of trees that need to be removed there and other things. So it's been an area that the district is used to seeing, and I think all the conversations are happening with the right folks. Obviously, air quality being a big part of that as we move forward and get things finalized, but we've been talking about it for years. So I'm hoping today we get support from the board to move forward with this project and continue moving in that direction of biomass, tree removal, and everything else that needs to happen here. So, thank you.
Air quality and CDD are both in the picture as well, so.
Right, and so that's what I was going to mention. In the MOU, it talks about Earth Foundries being responsible for the permitting, but there are a lot of things that have already been happening with county departments to make sure that, that everything is compliant. And then yesterday, at the Risk Reduction Authority, we had a presentation from Water Resources about an experiment using biochar locally in a couple of the creeks to monitor how it works as possible filtration for water runoff. And that's a really exciting project for us, and if it is successful, then they're going to want a local source of biochar to continue. So that is one of the opportunities for this byproduct, to keep everything within the region. So it's pretty exciting.
Yes, it is. And Roger was just telling me that he's, Terry has put him in contact with Angela DePamidou at Water Resources, so, yeah.
And I also want to point out that this is funded by PG&E.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Glad to hear about the involvement of CDD, but in the MOU itself, I don't see a peep of CEQA in there. And I'm also not aware of what the overlay permitting is for the Lakosan property. So I want to be supportive, and obviously, this is envisioned as something temporary, but a pilot program could morph into something more permanent. So where are we at in the realm between an emergency activity, a temporary activity, and a pilot program for what's going to be a permanent facility and what level of CEQA review is going to be done?
I defer to Roger on that. I know they've been dealing with CDD.
I'm not Roger, I'm Diddy. I'm the co-founder and majority owner of Earth Foundries. And we are, I just wanted to point out, we are a certified woman-owned business and certified B Corp benefit corporation, so we're happy to be contacted by Clerk and involved in this project. We are dedicated to reducing catastrophic wildfire in California. That's our mission, and this is an incredible place to be able to show what we can do. We're trying to reduce the cost of these projects, and that's why we're trying to use the material to create a beneficial byproduct, which is the biochar, which also sequesters carbon as we go through the process. So as far as the CEQA process goes, we are in the, working with Clerk to prepare the application to go through CDD right now. So we don't have an answer to specifically what type of CEQA process we're going to be doing, but we expect that it will be exempt from CEQA. And if you have any other specific questions about the impacts, but we have environmental professionals, both myself and from Clerk, preparing those documents to submit a full package to the CDD.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? And I had a quick question, and it really makes no difference to me. I think this is something that the, the logic of how this helps out in Lake County is too easy to say yes already on this item, and it's something we need to move forward with. And I'm guessing, I'm just kind of thinking about the CEQA question, you're not digging anything, you're bringing equipment that's on top of land, and I do know that there are some CEQA exemptions for even just staking it down temporarily, and I know it speaks to temporary timeframes. I wanted to ask just a quick question, I guess looking for a business deal that I didn't see in there. Is there a way for that biochar to be made available at a nominal fee to our other water districts, such as not Lakosan, but our special districts, water districts, who might be able to utilize that rather than purchasing it wholesale or retail?
Yeah, certainly. At this point, we don't have a place to put all the biochar that we're creating, and we'll be exploring either selling or giving. Of course, if we sell the biochar, then we have, then we can provide the service for cheaper, but at this point, there's not a real well-defined outlet for the biochar from Lake County.
Because I would love to see a good relationship where, obviously, we provide the property, you provide the service of being able to do the 3,000 tons of biomass and then some, but then also seeing how it is that we can implement the output of that product and that process to utilize for our benefits.
It's, yeah, it's definitely the priority and the preference to keep it in Lake County.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I could add to that a little bit more, Chair. The biochar is one step removed from an activated carbon, which is what we use in our water treatment facilities, but my understanding is that they're already working on a grant to pursue getting funded for that and converting that biochar to an activated carbon. But yeah, the utilization of it in our water treatment plants, as well as the other 17, you know, surface water treatment plants that are on Clear Lake, is, has been a topic of discussion as well already.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we should find out this month about the status of that grant.
Awesome. We'll keep our fingers crossed for you. Supervisor Green.
Just to follow a question on the CEQA. So I'm not aware of anything in our zoning ordinance that currently permits for the operation of an incinerator, mobile or otherwise, but you mentioned the possible CEQA exemption. Are you aware at this stage of the game whether any type of use permit is going to be required by CDD?
It's possible that a use permit will be required, yes. But it, there are no permanent changes to the site. So we'll just, we're just, we come in for a couple of months, and then we, we move along, and then we can come back and do it again next winter.
All right, thank you.
If there's no further questions, open it up to the public. And Roger, I don't know if you wanted to say anything, since your name has been brought up. All right. I see no hands up in the Zoom room and no one getting up in the chamber, and I'll bring it back to the board for action. Was that a click? CAO Burger.
I would just like to remind the board that they're sitting as the Lakosan Board of Directors, which should be included in your motion.
Thank you for that reminder.
There's no more comments, Mr. Chair. I move, sitting as the Lakosan Board of Directors, I move to approve the MOU between Lakosan and Earth Foundries, Inc. for the operation and placement of a mobile paralysis unit in Middletown at the west end of the Middletown wastewater treatment plant, commencing July 1st, 2024, for a period of 18 months through December 31st, 2025, and authorize the chair to sign the MOU.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our 611 item, Presentation of Rate Study for the Following Districts, Kelseyville Water Works District Number Three, Northwest Regional Wastewater Collection System, and CSA Two Spring Valley. Director Harder.
Yes, Mr. Chair. What you have before you today is a consideration, or receipt of the presentation, more appropriately, of water rate studies for the four mentioned districts. We've been working with a consultant for about six months now?
Yeah.
Yeah. On rate analysis for all the four districts. There's, Kelseyville has water and sewer, so it's essentially two districts. It's one district, but it's got two components to it, Spring Valley and then Northwest Sewer District. to it, Spring Valley and then Northwest Sewer District. So we've been working on those rate analysis processes. We've been working very closely with the Spring Valley Advisory Committee. We've gone through multiple revisions. We think we have something that they are happy with finally, after about four or five revisions. We recently presented down at the Big Valley Advisory Committee meeting, and we're here today to give you a presentation of what this rate structure looks like. So this is going to be the kickoff of the 218 process. So after the presentation, we would envision mailing out ballots at the end of the first week in July, maybe July 12. So the ballots would go out for a 45-day period for the customers in all four districts, and it would come back, and there would be the whole process with a public hearing before the board in mid-September, looking to adopt, and if the rates are adopted, to enact them for the November billing period. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Allison, and she'll go ahead and walk through the presentation.
Great. Good afternoon, Board. So as Scott mentioned, we've been working on four separate rate studies. So the Spring Valley water rates, Kelseyville water rates, Kelseyville sewer rates, and Northwest sewer rates. So I'll walk you through those four in that order. We have developed a five-year rate plan. Five years is the Proposition 218 timeline that you're allowed to adopt in one public outreach process. Prop 218 is the governing statute for how water and sewer rates can be implemented in California. And so Scott mentioned the first rate adjustment, if approved, would go into effect for the November billing period, followed by July 1 billing period thereafter, July, you know, corresponding with your fiscal year cycles. So the main point is, we want rates to cover costs. We want the utility systems to be financially self-supported. So we're looking at revenue increases to cover operating costs, infrastructure costs, maintain and accumulate reasonable emergency reserves. So if a water pipeline breaks, the districts have the money to replace it. And then on top of the revenue increase, we looked at rate structure. So that's how customers are charged for service. Water and sewer rates are very litigious in California. We wanted to make sure that the utility rates comply with Proposition 218, and then also comply with industry best practices, as well as recent court cases. Next slide, please. So very briefly, the Spring Valley Water Utility services about 400 residential-only connections, and rates have not been increased in an extremely long time. The Spring Valley system is proposed to receive fairly significant rate impacts. However, if we account for, you know, rates not increasing for the last decade, there's definitely some catch-up that's happening for their financial situation here. And as Scott mentioned, we've been working very closely with the advisory committee. We ran many, many, many scenarios, and this was their preferred option. So Spring Valley, Spring Valley's water utility is operating at a deficit, so revenues are not covering costs. So that's the first phase, is to catch up to existing operating costs. And the committee asked that we allocate a portion of their property taxes to cover water utility expenses, and that's a method of phasing in water rate adjustments. So instead of doing a full freight, you know, year-one, fully cost-of-service basis, we're supplementing partially with property tax revenues as we go along, and that helps mitigate and phase in rate adjustments. We are also planning to rebuild reserves to have that emergency funding available for any main breaks or other contingencies. And then down below, I have a chart of the proposed revenue impacts. So it is year-over-year successive rate increases. Not every customer will get exactly the percent increase there, but that's an overall system-wide average. So a lower water user would get less of an increase, a higher water user would get more of an increase. So this chart is the proposed rate structure adjustments. All of your special districts are billed on a bimonthly schedule, so each bill represents two months of service. Spring Valley currently has a $50 base charge, and that includes quite a lot of water use, 1,200 cubic feet. That's CCF. I know that's kind of jargon, but it's 12 units of water use. We do not recommend continuing a rate structure where you're including so much water use in the base fee. So right now, a person that uses only one unit of water and a person that uses 12 units of water pay the same bill, and that's not really fair. So Spring Valley recommended that we include only two units of water in the base fee. That was the preference of the Spring Valley Advisory Committee. Spring Valley also pays a capital fee that's proposed to remain the same. And then we've made a number of adjustments to the tiered rate structure. Under tiered water rates, higher levels of use are charged a higher rate per unit of water. It's kind of like electric peak pricing. And tiered rates have been heavily examined in court cases, so we were very careful to assign specific costs to these proposed tiers, and the tiers better align with average usage statistics for the Spring Valley area, where Tier One, encompassing three units to nine units of use, is the average use. Nine units is the average use. And then peak use and peak cost is assigned to Tier Two. So, you know, there's a lot of economics we can talk about behind the scenes, but the overall story is that we want to better align the rate structure with actual costs and current best practices. So after that November rate structure adjustment, the future years would be just increased by the proposed revenue increase year after year. Okay. So here's an example bill of, you can advance it, thank you, an example bill of an average customer using nine units of water per bimonthly period. So this current customer pays $64, and all of their use is in that free water allotment, the free base fee. Under the proposed rates, this customer would be billed for water usage in that Tier One, you know, rate component. So it's more proportional to how customers are using the water system. So this customer would have a pretty significant bill increase from $64 to over $100. But that is needed to meet costs and ensure the financial stability of the utility. So moving on to Kelseyville. Kelseyville has about 1,100 connections. Kelseyville has had inflationary rate increases each year, but it's not enough, unfortunately. Kelseyville is covering its costs, but just by a slim margin, and Kelseyville has run down its emergency reserves and fund balances. So to keep up with cost increases over the next five years and to fund some capital improvements, there is a need to increase rates at the percentages shown here. So Kelseyville has a very unusual rate structure, a very kind of old-school type of rate structure, where water service is based on like per dwelling unit, per motel room, per RV space. That is not industry standard, and so we're proposing to transition to a fee structure based on meter size, which is the widely accepted industry-standard rate structure. Next slide, please. So that first year, we're readjusting the rates based on meter size, and then each subsequent year, we're just increasing by that overall cost of service applicable to the utility. So Kelseyville's current water rates also are a tiered rate structure. Luckily, this one doesn't have a base fee, which includes a lot of, you know, free water. We found that Kelseyville's average use is 18 units for a single-family home. So we are expanding Tier One from 15 units to 18 units to better align with current water usage statistics. Although Tier One now, although you get more water in Tier One, it costs higher per unit. And then Tier Two is peak or overuse usage above 18 units, and that is at a higher cost. We're assigning peak usage costs to Tier Two. And then all other customers, so that'd be all multifamily, commercial customers, are getting an average rate. And that is because there's a wide variety of commercial customers. So a big supermarket might blast through all its Tier One usage right away, even though they're using like a very steady, you know, non-peak level of demand. They're just so large that they have to use a lot of water for their business purposes. And then you can see here the five-year rate proposal for the volume rates. So I'll give you the overview of Kelseyville Sewer, and then I'll show you a quick bill impacts analysis. Kelseyville Sewer is in really bad shape. It's operating at a deficit. It's spent down its fund reserves. So there's a big, big jump in the overall rate revenue proposal. And we did do outreach to the Kelseyville service area. It was, we had a pretty well-attended meeting. We had about 30 people there or so, explained the rate adjustments. There was some shock at first. You know, these are pretty high-rate increases, but there was an understanding that the utility has to meet its costs and is not doing so currently. So sewer rates for both Kelseyville and Northwest are fixed charges based on land use type, and the underlying apportionment of cost is based on flow. So that's the amount of sewer discharged into the system and pollution. So how much you have to treat the waste that your different customers are discharging. And so your rate structure seemed very industry-typical, and the only adjustment was to add a new multifamily category. Multifamily customers use lower flow, have lower flow than single families, so it's more fair that they have a slightly lower rate. So the next chart is the current rate structure. You can just see that there's a schedule of fixed fees based on land use type. I also want to highlight the capital improvement fee at the very bottom of the table. So Kelseyville Operations needs to increase its revenue dramatically, but Kelseyville Capital, we are proposing a decrease. We don't see the need to have that capital fee so high. We don't have identified capital improvement projects that that fee needs to fund. So although Operations is going way up, Capital is going way down, and that definitely helps mitigate some of those rate impacts. So here is the chart of the proposed rates. So again, not every customer gets exactly that 65%. You can see increase. You can see some categories are higher, some categories don't go quite as high. It's a more moderate rate adjustment. And again, that is because we reviewed the underlying flow and pollutant loading estimates of each customer and more fairly attributed costs based on those parameters. And here's the additional rate categories. And then you can see at the very bottom of the chart, the capital improvement fee charged to all customers is proposed to decrease from about $20 to $3. So although other portions of the fee are going up, that part of the fee is going down, and that better reflects the cost structure of the sewer utility. So here's the example water bill for an average Kelseyville resident. This customer is a single-family customer using the average use, which is 18 units. So under the current rate structure, this customer is using most of their water in Tier One, a little bit in Tier Two, and pays $74 under their proposed fee. This person is using all of their water now in Tier One, and is going to pay about $20 more on the water portion of their bill. Under the sewer charges that this typical or average customer is paying, this customer's, you know, domestic strength fee, that's the operating portion of the fee, is going way up. The loan fee is staying the same, and then the capital improvement fee is going down. And the sum total of all those impacts to the sewer bill is an increase of about $20. So in total, this customer is paying about $40 more under the rate proposal. So to wrap up with the Northwest utility, Northwest has about 4,000 customers. Northwest has also had inflationary increases each year. Northwest has a very slight operating deficit. It's not terrible at this point, but we need to reverse that deficit and start building up some fund balance to, you know, preserve and improve the financial health of that utility. So you can see there are some rate impacts here, the 20% plus 10%, so not as extreme as the other utilities, but there is a need to increase rates. And Northwest sewer rate structure is very similar to Kelseyville, so based on fixed charges and the underlying flow and pollutant loadings were adjusted for this rate plan. So we have the schedule of fees here. So the typical single-family cost is proposed to increase from about $68 to about $80. And then subsequent rate increases would be 10% and then 3% thereafter. And then, again, we kept the rate structure pretty similar to current. We kept the same categories to provide continuity and just updated the flow and pollutant loading estimates. Okay, so to wrap up, we are proposing each utility service area get an increase. They vary. Some are more extreme, some are more moderate. But these rate studies are intended to meet the cost of service. These are actual budgeted costs to run your utilities. Without rate increases, these would all, you know, use up their fund balances and then come to the county and need cash infusions. These utilities need to be financially self-supported by their own rates. So we've assigned a five-year schedule of proposed fees to get to that level of financial security for each utility. And then on top of the revenue increases, we really focused on making sure the rate structures are more compliant with Proposition 218 and recent court cases. So we're here today to receive input. We'll continue working also with the local advisory committees. We'll finalize the rate reports. And then, as Scott mentioned, the next step would be the public outreach process. So every rate payer in these districts would get a notice in the mail. They wouldn't be surprised that all of a sudden their bill increased. They get a notice in the mail, they can attend public hearings, they can give their input. And then at that hearing in the fall, they can give public comment as well. And then, absent majority protest, the rate adjustments could be adopted for November. So I'm happy to receive comments and answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Director Harder, did you have anything else to add before we bring it back to the board?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members? I have a question. I guess it's an equity question. Spring Valley is set at a 2 CCF, and Kelseyville is set as an 18. So it's kind of like the way we used to do street speeds. If everybody goes 40, then we're going to have to set the speed limit at 40. So, I mean, in the mindset of conservation of water, we're giving single families a whole lot more access to water in Kelseyville than you are in Spring Valley, and I'm just kind of, how does that work?
Yeah. If we could bring up that Spring Valley chart, I can point out which.
I know you said that's the average use, but...
And it's nine for Spring Valley. So, and that's where the tier break happens. So two, Spring Valley Advisory Committee wanted to see something in that base rate, that flat fixed charge. They currently get 12. So they wanted to see something that was in there. We have to be delicate about what we set that amount at, because as Allison was saying, if there's a user that uses one unit and then there's a user that used, under the current billing system, 11 or 12, they're paying the same. So it's not fair and equitable to the customers in that district. But the defense and the position can be taken that the operation of the water district results in a usage of water for each customer on their behalf, essentially, of a small portion, flushing the lines out, testing, sampling, those sort of things, use up a small portion of the water that can be fairly distributed across all the customers. And then where that tier break happens, that has to be at a place where it can be defined financially. So if the average winter use in Spring Valley, which it is, is nine, then when summer use happens, the cost to the utility goes up because we're having to exceed that average, so our production costs go up. And that's where that tier break happens, because you can't set tiers arbitrarily. They have to be based on actual increased cost of production. Kelseyville, their average use is 18. So as you pointed out, it's kind of like that speed zone study analogy, that if everyone's driving that fast, that's kind of where the breakpoint is. Similarly here, if everyone's using 18 in that winter use, then those additional costs of production, us bringing on another well, we've got four wells out in Kelseyville, those costs can be directly tied to that above-average usage. So that's where that tier breakpoint happens. And each district is independent.
I get it, but that's still awkward in the sense of, again, water conservation is water conservation. It shouldn't be based on, have you been using a whole lot of water lately? And if so, we're going to allow you to keep using a whole lot of water versus if you haven't, we're going to... haven't, we're going to set it up so that it continues to kind of push you in the direction. That's just me. My, my mind's not logically able to catch on to that. I feel like there's a very, there's something in my mind that's wrong with that. But that, obviously, there's a process to follow for any kind of nexus study. This is a nexus study of sorts. So my other one is nine plus. If the average is nine, why can't we do a tier three to try and persuade people not to use 50? Because again, in the idea of conservation, if we don't set up a high bar where it becomes super pricey, then people could just, they're at nine plus. Why not just continue using all the water you want and deplete the water source?
That's a great question. There was a court case about that. So the San Juan Capistrano Court Case, it was about tiered water rates. And it was an agency that had a higher tier purely for conservation, purely as a penalty for high water users. And that was struck down. It was determined that there's no, there has to be an underlying cost basis for why that is priced the way it is, that high, like penalty tier. Is it based on acquiring another water source? Is it based on, hey, we have these conservation programs that we're going to put that cost into that higher penalty tier? Is it peak pumping? Is it, what, what other costs can you define for a super peak or penalty tier? And we looked through the, the budgets and operational data of all the utilities and couldn't specifically identify a, a cost to go in another or super peak type of tier. So we didn't feel it was, you know, substantiated and would comply with these court cases in Proposition 218.
Yeah, it's got to be defensible. Unfortunately, that, that was a tool that was, you know, utilized down in Spring Valley, but it's, it's now becomes more of a code enforcement issue if there's illicit or illegal water use. We, we fall back on our rules and regulations for the water department and for the water district and if they're outside of that. But if they're just using a lot of water and, you know, the, the plant production runs 30%, even during peak summertime, you know, or maybe 40, 45%. So we're not at plant capacity. We're not having to bring in additional raw water sources and we're not spinning up and seeing additional excessive costs. That same one unit of water costs the same amount to produce whether they're using 18 or if they're using 50 of them. There's no additional cost to us. We can't penalize them with a conservation tier.
And during a declared drought emergency like we just experienced, at that point, you can set.
At that point.
Specific criteria of what the conservation strategy is. Okay.
Yeah. At that point, we, we step into our drought conservation plan and we can ratchet stuff down. It's an NORD and it's adopted by the board. So yeah, we have those additional tools in those circumstances.
Okay. And those are all the, the questions I have. I'll just say I'm, I'm uncomfortable, but also stuck between a rock and a hard place. Cause where do we get you the funding to be able to continue that? I, I do have a question, I guess. It's not a question to you. It's more, I question the decrease in the capital. Improvements, because eventually you're going to need those costs covered. So I appreciate that you've lowered it, but at the same time, it, it gives me pausing concern that the future of that infrastructure is going to need some capital funds to be able to do that. And obviously, the cost of the increase of the rates is for more of the day to day than the overall capital improvements that you'll be doing to that. So lots of concern, but also I don't have a better idea of how it is that I can keep you whole and keep providing the service because it's absolutely necessary.
If I can speak too to the capital reserves, we have, we have healthy capital reserves in Kelseyville. That's why we can reduce the amount. We're not eliminating them and we're not without capital reserves. So we have capital reserves there to do projects. It's just at this point in time, there's no larger scale projects beyond what our reserves already exist to justify keeping that fee in there. And, and the way rates are structured currently, it's a five-year plan. So, you know, the, the hope of the department is to get through all of our rate structures, modernize them, bring them compliant with current Proposition 218 requirements from current legislation, current rate structures and billing types. And then we'll be revisiting that on a regular cycle. So we, we shouldn't end up in a spot where we're, again, behind the eight ball and we're looking at 20 or 30% increases in that first year. Most of these rate increases, by the time you get to year five, you're looking at 2% or 3% increase, very, you know, equitable with the cost of living increases. And so the next cycle, we hope will be there as well. And if at that point in time, we have capital plans in place that say, okay, we need additional capital funding, that can be a component that can be revisited.
Is there a plan for capacity studies?
Yes. The plan was to cycle through all the rate structures because the rates are pretty outdated and then go back and cycle through capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
Just had a question on the loan. What's the loan amount that's owed at Kelseyville? Cause in here, there's a loan fee. Do you guys know that?
I think that was paid off, but.
Just had a curious question because it was in there, $14.
I don't have a lot of info about that.
I'm just wondering how far it goes.
Oh, yeah, that's the one.
What's left on the payoff.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of additional information because we understand that, that revenue is then put in a debt service payment fund and is separate from the rest of the rate revenue.
And I'm not sure.
You could just send me any, just curiosity on that, you know, looking, what it goes back to, when it would be paid off. Cause whatever improvements you make, you know, if there's an opportunity somewhere down the road to get that loan cleared out. And there's $14 savings for everybody, you know. So anyway, just curious if you could send that to me. I greatly appreciate it.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah. Appreciate the presentation. Prop 218 stuff is hard. My challenge is mapping, so forgive my ignorance of these CSA areas, but I couldn't find maps on our GIS and there's no maps presented here. So on Northwest, sewer connections, any of those within the Scotts Valley area or is it all North Lakeport?
North Lakeport and then around the North Shore. So it goes North Lakeport, Upper Lake, Nice, Lucerne, Conotee and Paradise Valley.
All right. And then Kelseyville apparently extends as far west as Corinthian Bay and Finley.
Corinthian Bay is a separate assessment district, but it does discharge into the Kelseyville system. So they've got their own billing structure, but they discharge into Kelseyville. And they pay, the Corinthian Bay District pays Kelseyville for the treatment and disposal.
I guess when the notices go out, they'll obviously get to the addresses that you know about. Is there any way for the general public to just spin up these maps of these various utility areas?
If they're not on our website, we'll put them up. I've got a really good 24 by 36, which identifies all our district and I'll get it up on our website.
Okay. In addition to the mail notices, obviously we want to be able to anticipate if there's opportunities for additional public input. And, and on the west side of the Kelseyville District, depending on Corinthian Bay feeds into this, feeds into that, if the CIP isn't envisioning any potential for a future tie-in with the city of Lakeport, and I know that's a pipe dream that's way off in the future, but at some point, Corinthian Bay and points west will either continue to kind of sit under this modality, but eventually we're going to talk about purple pipe around the lake and stuff like that too, right? So none of that is envisioned in, in the price modeling here.
Correct.
All right. And if we did some big, big project like that, that would, we'd have to come back and revisit these during the next 218 cycle.
This would probably be expired and we'd be cycles down the road. The, the full circle project I envision is probably 10 or 20 years, 10 years probably, 20 years for the local collection systems, probably then to be tying into it as a disposal method, but.
So it's premature to even ask about that now?
I think we don't have enough information at this point, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And I believe that regulation is that these rates can only be used to process for those that are paying the rates. You can't use the funding you receive through the rates to expand or do any other new infrastructure. It's only to utilize in the operation of what they're already paying you for. You'd have to get new money in order to do any kind of expansion to, whether it's connected to the full circle or connected to anything else. I don't pay rates for my thing, so you can expand it to someone else's property. Yeah. So it's very enterprise funding specific to what it needs to be used for. See no further pens up? Let's open it up for public comment. And no hands in Zoom and no one getting up in the chamber. And this was just a receiving of the presentation with any questions or comments, but no action needed at this moment. Do you need our blessing to move forward with Prop 218? Would that be better as a motion to say we accept this study?
That might be helpful. It's not agenda as though as the items. I don't know if.
Okay. So y'all have to bring it back to us in order to initiate the Prop 218?
I don't know.
As far as the Prop 218 issue, it, it is not part of the board's scope on the recommended actions. Certainly staff can look into that. And, and it is a presentation. Now, that's the part of the recommend, recommendation here is just presentation. If your board does wish to move to receive the presentation, just for clarification, it would be doing so as the Board of Directors for Lakosan. I believe that's the case. Is that right? Director Harder?
Yes. Well, no, I think this one is actually for, they're sitting as Board of Supervisors or Board of Directors.
Okay.
Because we have CSA two in here as well.
Anybody want to entertain a motion to accept?
So do we go as sitting as Locasand or just as the Board of Supervisors? Cause it's a mixture. Should we do two motions?
Can you do all three? Cause Kelseyville County Water Works District is separate from Lakosan as well. So we have all three districts represented here in this presentation.
Or if it's unnecessary to make a motion and just say, thank you for the presentation.
Yes.
Correct. Maybe we'll just leave it at that.
As long as you have what you need to go forward.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for entertaining the questions. Okay. Next, you got a laundry list of things. Our 612 item, consideration approval of occupancy agreement for the Canacti Gardens LLC Development in Clear Lake. Director Harder?
Thank you, Chair. So this item before you is regarding the Canacti Gardens Development Project, which is a 102-unit, low-income project in the city of Clear Lake. Construction is finalized and the project is seeking, wow, that seems really hot, echoey. They're seeking connection to the public sewer system. They've paid their capacity fees. The, we've done the inspection of their onsite stuff. It's passed that satisfactorily. But the hydraulic capacity analysis identified mitigation improvements that needed to be done. So those are currently under design. The design is not anticipated to be completed until October, I believe. But we want to work with the developer and get them in. They've got some funding requirements. They got some IRS requirements. We want to get them in and using the project sooner. So it was determined that we could probably set up a bypass that would bypass their flows to a spot in the collection system downstream of where the impact would happen so that there would be no negative impact on the sewer collection system. So the agreement before you today has gone through iterations back and forth with the development and is, is structured such to allow occupancy to account for their prorated share of the cost of those mitigation improvements, their prorated share of the cost of the bypass pumping system and the cost of the hydraulic capacity analysis that they were required to complete. That's essentially what it is. That's where we're at.
Thank you very much. I know that this was an item that we had discussed when it came to us, where there was a, a belief of a potential impasse and to postpone the opening of the apartment complex. Appreciate the conversations that continued from there and a, a workaround of sorts to try and make this work. And I appreciate your flexibility and the conversations that we had with the developer as well as the city of Clear Lake. I know there's one thing here, obviously the big issue was the capacity, especially with the INI during rain and infiltration into the system. And so this is slated for the project to begin sometime in October. It's possible that the weather might change before then. I didn't see a specific date and I don't think there needs to be. But is there a plan of maybe August or September to look at installing the bypass? Or are you waiting to see the weather changing and then installing the bypass?
The, I believe it's specified in here by October 1st is when it would, we would expect to see the bypass installed. If we see weather before then, I don't anticipate we're going to see heightened flows. The, the analysis showed that during the summertime, the project flows did not exceed and would not cause issues. It was only once we got into that wet season that they would cause issues. So from our perspective, we had, we would envision the bypass going into effect, you know, that, that first couple of weeks of October, probably kick it off October 1st, have it in place before the wet season officially begins, October 15th. And then the, the development project is, is without worry. But once this agreement is signed, they're free to occupy.
Yeah. That's awesome. Thank you very much. Any further comments, questions? Supervisor Green?
Just a question on the bypass. How do you arrive at what a proportionate share is?
So the engineer that was putting it together looked at the, all the flows in the area and they looked at the project development flows based on their, you know, their number of units and their fixture counts, et cetera. And it was about 10.6% is what they estimated. So the anticipated, anticipated cost of the bypass is 285,000 plus 20%, minus 15%. So in that range. So we've set their proportionate cost at about 25,000. So about 10% of that from the low end.
We would, we wouldn't be building the bypass were it not for the desire to hook up this new apartment complex, right? So are there any other flows going into the bypass?
Yes, there are flows upstream, but those flows upstream would need to be bypassed for the improvement project regardless. So because you have to take that section, that particular section of sewer main out of service in order to upsize it, you have to bypass anyways. So we would have a bypass, but our bypass wouldn't account for the additional flows. So their proportionate share covers their additional flows out of the total flows that are being bypassed.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no one getting up in the room and no hands in the chamber and bringing it back to the board for action. CAO Parker or Mr. Guentavano? I'm not sure who clicked.
Mr. Chair, just based on the, what is proposed as the recommended action, for clarification, your board is sitting as the.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors for Lakosan. And it would be a motion to consider for approval of the occupancy agreement for the Canacti Gardens LLC Development in Clear Lake and also to authorize the Lakosan District Chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much for that assistance. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I know we have, let's see here, what do we have? We're going to go and start with. Social Services Cow Works Outcome. And did I, did I call it out at the wrong time? Let's do Director Ewing. I don't think this one's going to take a while. 7.3. Consideration of Change Order Number One to the Agreement with Regia, I think, Construction for the East Lake Sanitary Landfill Phase One Cell Expansion Project, Bid Number 23-32 for an increase of $1,054,248 and a revised contract amount of $6,215,911 and authorize the Chair to sign. Director Ewing?
All right. Good afternoon, Large Ewing, Public Services Director. With that summary, I'll just set the stage that the, the East Lake landfill right now is under construction for an expansion project that I think is clarified here. Your board approved a contract with, with Regi Construction on February 27th for a, the dollar amount is $5,161,663. The scope of, of that project that was determined at that time did not include certain, certain portions of, well, certain aspects that were later determined to be required from the water board, Central Valley Water Board. The Change Order Number One summarizes them. The, the main, the main issue there is, is what's called an underdrain. It's a very simple, but essentially it's a large, along the, the bottom of the entire cell, a bunch of rock, simplistically is what we're talking about. The issue is groundwater separation. We need to ensure that, that we maintain adequate groundwater separation. The bottom of the landfill needs to have adequate separation from any water that would be coming up from below. We have, we have the data to demonstrate that we were and, and still are maintaining that separation. The water board came back with recommendations which, which our engineer agreed with, that, that the, the underdrain would add additional, an additional factor of safety for, for slope stability, ensuring that, that basically the landfill doesn't slide away. That's really what we're talking about here. So we, we requested a change order from, from Regi Contractors. They submitted the change order that is there. There's a few other items that are required. There's a, an erosion control mat on a drainage ditch and then some, some aspects of the project that need to be taken out as a result of these projects, the additions here. And then the addition of 28 days to the, to the project. So, so the result is a little over $1 million, $1,054,248,000.
Thank you very much for your summary. Any questions or comments? And while I know the answer to this, the funding for the increase will be coming from?
Yeah, we have an enterprise fund and a reserve fund specifically for landfill expansion. We have appropriations this year, carries over into next year. And, and the, for the appropriations this year, there's enough to fund what is going on now. We will add on for your 2425 budget for the future work.
Yeah, I think that was like 14 million in that?
In the reserve, there's about, there's about 12 million now, and that's for future phases as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Let's open it up for the public. Any comments, questions? Anyone wish to speak on this item? No one in the chamber? No one in Zoom? Bringing it back for action.
Move to approve change order number one to the agreement with Regi Construction for the East Lake Sanitary Landfill Phase One Cell Expansion Project, bid number 23-32 for an increase of $1,054,248 and a revised contract amount of $6,215,911 and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going back to item 7.2, CalWorks Outcome and Accountability Program, CALOR. Still trying to figure out where the R comes from. System Improvement Plan, SIP. We have...
We have a PowerPoint for you. Do you want to bring it up? Or do you want me to connect my laptop? Okay. Where is yours? Oh. Is it via Zoom? Or you can do it on Zoom.
Good afternoon.
Hello. Working out the technical difficulties here and getting this PowerPoint up so we can share with the public as we're talking. Okay. Sure, sorry. Yeah, we're just working out the technical difficulties here, getting the Zoom up or getting into the Zoom so I can share our PowerPoint presentation. I don't think I'm still in the Zoom. Sorry.
I don't think this item will come to that.
I hope not.
Review.
Never know.
The R for OR, review.
Oh.
Guess I didn't spend long enough looking for it.
Okay, there it goes, slowly but surely. So while we're working on this, thank you, Board, for having us here today. My name is Rachel Delman Parsons. I am the Director for Lake County Social Services. And with me here today is Teresa Shoen. She's our Program Manager over the Welfare to Work Program, also known as Employment Services. And it is her and her team who have put together this presentation that we will be viewing today. The CALOR SIP has gone before CDSS and been approved. So now it is waiting on your signature for approval. And this presentation that we are bringing you today is just a summary of the full SIP. Okay, I think I'm finally in the Zoom. All right. And I'm going to hand this over to Teresa.
Thank you. So to answer your question, CALOR, the acronym stands for CalWorks Outcome and Accountability Review Program. The R is review. And this is the state's effort in order to improve the CalWorks program, the services we provide, and ensure that the outcomes that our clients achieve are the best possible. And a lot of that has to do with how we do what we do and if there are ways to streamline and facilitate things, we want to make sure that we're looking at that through an equity lens and making sure that everything that we do from, at every level, makes sense. So you can switch. Just a, a quick reminder that CalWorks is California's version of the federal TANF program. TANF is Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. And this specifically looks at the Welfare to Work program. So CALOR, this is our first five-year continuous improvement program. It's a cyclical, long-term, look at the outcomes for families. So we evaluate our processes. We look at service delivery. We pull in all the data we can find, whether it's economic demographics for the county to see if our clients are aligned with the parameters of the people living in the county, if we're missing anybody. And then we take a human-centered approach where we held a full week of stakeholder forums. We had staff from every level of the organization, from office assistants all the way up through the director, to look at each individual piece of what we do. So right now, we're in 2024. Last year, I came and did a quick presentation on the CALCSA, which is our county self-assessment. So from the results of the assessment, we built this system improvement plan, which went to CDSS in February, and they signed off on it. And the next step is board approval. So all the things that we look at, we want to get a holistic picture, not just of the data, but everything together tells a story for our clients. One of the things that's required for CALOR is a peer review. So each county chose another county to pair up with that was similar in nature, not necessarily in size. And so we partnered with Yuba County. And they came to visit us, and we had a full day where we looked at all of our processes, how we do things. It was nice to have another county's perspective, their ideas, and then we reciprocated and went to Yuba County and did the same for them. She's skipping the picture with her image. So when we looked at the performance measures, of which there are many that the state has picked, we could pick one, two, or three that we want to focus on in this first five-year cycle that we want to improve on. So the things we looked at were what performance measures can we make a measurable difference? Which ones will improve other measures? And what benefits our participants the most? So just a quick look at what some of the data looks like from the dashboard. And the CALOR dashboard is a public-facing dashboard. If you went to CDSS and you typed in CALOR dashboard, this is what would come up. And it gives us an idea of where we land compared to the state on average. So the ones where the red arrows are pointing down are ones where we are not measuring up to the rest of the state. And the ones in blue, we're doing fairly well. The orange is statewide, and the blue in the graphs is Lake County. So we are also looking at long-term performance measures. And this happens to be a brand-new one that started last year. And this is wage progression. So when people leave the program, it's nice to know what they're making. If they're off aid, are they continuing to stay in the job long-term? So this shows us in the first quarter, obviously, that is a, an average, and people get a job at any time during that quarter. So the first quarter is always going to be lower on average. And rate of program reentries, we've noticed that we have quite a few participants who get a job, they leave, and then they're right back within months sometimes. And so what we want to do is really look at that, see what we could do to improve that and lower that rate of reentries. So these are the three measures that we chose. Orientation timeliness rate, which has to do with how quickly we get them through the door. Appraisal attendance rate, are we engaging them and effectively getting them into the program? And then program reentries, which is a long-term measure. Oh, that's neat. So the orientation attendance rate, this is where we're, our starting point, is 38%. That means basically four out of 10 are attending orientation. That means six out of 10 are not. Why are they not attending? We're losing them before we even get them in the door. Appraisal timeliness has to do with, once they attend orientation, how long does it take to get them in, get them appraised? And right now, we're looking at 60, 70 days. And the state, for this measure, wants it done within 30 days. And then reentries will be a long-term measure. What can we do to ensure that people who leave with a job stay employed? So we have three teams, one to deal with each measure. And this is to just let you know who the team leaders are for each team. Orientation attendance rate is being handled by Sophia Peña. Appraisal timeliness is Julian Roby, and they are both supervisors at Employment Services, Services, my mouth is dry. And program reentries, I'm heading up that team. So with orientation attendance rate, the first thing we want to do is look at what data can we gather? So we have already started reaching out to participants who do not attend, calling them, finding out why they're not attending. Did they forget? Did we not send an appointment letter? Were they not engaged in the program? Did they not understand after they left intake? So all those things will help guide us in finding strategies to get them in the door. So one of the first things we want to do is look at how Welfare to Work is presented in eligibility when somebody applies for CalWorks. And a lot of our eligibility workers don't really know what we do in Welfare to Work, so it's hard for them to promote the program. So we're going to look at adding a phone script, adding, teaching our staff in eligibility what the Welfare to Work program can do. For conducting orientation, we're also looking at the number of days between a case approval and orientation and where we can tighten that up. We have a 10-day requirement where we send a letter to somebody or we contact them. We cannot schedule an appointment unless it's, we give them 10 days. So we do that three times in a row for three different appointments. That's a month wasted right there where they're just sitting. We're just sitting. So we're finding ways to tighten that up. And then a performance incentive program. We have performance incentive funding, which is not a ton of money, but it's enough to where we can incentivize certain achievements that our participants make. So if we can bring that and make it visible from the time that they apply, ooh, you can get an extra bump of money for attending orientation, for doing your appraisal. That, we hope, will also engage people and increase the numbers attending. So expanding the options for attending orientation. During the pandemic, we put in place virtual orientation. And while that's good, if people are still not attending, we're finding ways to do it where we can have an online video. They can watch it at their leisure. They don't have to wait for an appointment and come into the office or do it over the phone. So we're going to be looking at multiple ways that they can attend. With OCAT and appraisal, this is where our biggest gap is right now. And a lot of it has to do with childcare in the county. We cannot bring somebody and require them to come in to do their appraisal until childcare is in place. And that can take weeks sometimes to find a placement for them. So if we can find ways to tackle that barrier and streamline the process, then we can maybe achieve that 30-day limit. So some of the strategies would be to address their barriers to completing appraisal. And again, we're gathering data to make sure that what we think are the reasons are the reasons. So we're reaching out, finding out what's taking so long, where we can tighten up the processes internally. So with appraisal timeliness, addressing their barriers to completing appraisal. If we offer it to them when they can attend at a time that works for them, that's going to ensure that they are attending. We can schedule it in person if they want in person. We can do it virtually, or we could even go to their home and do it there if we needed to. Fully staffing positions is key to all of these measures. Without the staff, I don't think that we will meet our goals, but we're still going to move forward and do the best that we can to meet the goals. So, yeah, I kind of touched on this already. This is how we schedule appraisal. And we found quite a few ways we can tighten that up. So that should be a quick and easy fix. So with program reentries, we're gathering the data to find out why they're coming back on aid. Are they losing their jobs? Are they being laid off? Were they dissatisfied with their employment? And so we all know that education increases opportunity and expands the jobs that you will be qualified for. So we were going to be educating our staff on better connecting people to jobs that have promotional opportunities, that are in fields that are expanding. And so it's not just educating our clients, it's educating our staff as well. So on the dashboard, wherever you see an asterisk for Lake County, that means that we had fewer than 11 participants. It's de-identified data. So we can pull it from our system to find out what the actual numbers are. But on the dashboard, it's just unavailable. Smaller counties run up with this issue all the time. So with recidivism and people coming back onto the program, what we found out so far is that we have a lack of industries that pay a living wage. When you have little education, there's not a lot of choices. And so that has an impact on people coming back on the program. We had the pandemic, which of course is not the greatest time to be, you know, to set our baseline from moving forward. Low education rates in the county and before CalWorks 2.0 came out, our focus was on job first, get a job now. And with CalWorks 2.0, the states realized that it's better to keep them on aid a little longer, take it step by step to connect them with jobs that they will be satisfied with. Sometimes that's education. They can stay in education for four years if they need to get that degree, and they're much more likely to stay employed. So we know that layoffs happen. We know that people lack the skills that they need to get better jobs. A lot of the time, they will come back and say, well, it just wasn't the job for me. It wasn't a good fit. So it's dissatisfaction with the job. Or they're in a position where there's no promotional opportunities, or it's just low pay. And that's not going to support a family. And so we want to make sure that we place them in positions where they can succeed. So strategies, we want to connect better with EDD and understand more about our county's employment opportunities. Right now, we work with our participants, but we don't have the boots-on-the-ground knowledge. And so we're pulling that from EDD. We're also working with Career Point because they also have better data than we have available. And once we know where the jobs are, what the industries are, we can guide people into positions where there's better opportunities. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Director Delman Parsons, do you have anything else to add?
I would like to just thank Teresa and her team.
In the microphone.
I would like to thank Teresa and her team for all of the effort that they've put into this. It has not been a small amount of effort, especially given their short staffing, and they have a big job in front of them. But I am confident that they will be able to do that and help more of our families receiving cash aid get better outcomes. get better outcomes in terms of long-term employment.
Thank you both, and I have Supervisor Green with his pen up.
Thank you for the presentation. Number one, congratulations on getting the state to sign off on it. Makes our job easy here today, so we're not going to change a word on its head. That said, page 22 of this report did pop out to me as far as orientation attendance in that Yuba County, your peers do have a focus more on in-person eligibility interviews. And I guess here, both between short staffing and what have you, you're either a majority phone or all phone for intake. Uh, but the question I had was, Yuba County strikes me as being very similar. It is very rural, so we do have the Population Center in Marysville. But people seem to be able to make it down the hill to have those interviews. And I come back coming out of COVID, the personal touch can't be overstated in when we provide services to people, even at, even at an early intake phase. So, um, that, you know, I'm not going to second guess, if you have to do all phone all the time at this point for staffing, that's the way it is. But have you found any variables between when you provide in-person services and lower recidivism rate? That's not right, but um, better outcomes when you're having more consistent, more in-person contacts versus all phone all the time? Because if it's all phone all the time and it's a Zoom, it's just a checkbox. They're not going to be invested in this process.
Sure, so we leave it, I think, to customers to decide how they want to receive service. Right now, we offer both. Um, Teresa may have some data on who is more successful in participating. But we do offer in-person interviews. We do have in-person services for Employment Services, um, so.
With Employment Services especially, that is key. Having that in-person, one-on-one relationship. And you, it's so hard to develop that via Zoom or over the phone. It's just not as conducive to building trust. And if you're going to influence somebody and convince them that they can do this, that they have the wherewithal to go to school, to achieve a better life for their family, you need to develop that trust. Otherwise, you're not going to be successful. So for my staff, they come in at least a day a week to do in-person connections and have appointments with people across the desk instead of over the phone. With eligibility, I know that's much more difficult. And it's, it's a script, it's a quick in-and-out for intake. It's, it probably doesn't have the same needs to do in person, but from my, my perspective, it's vitally important. So while we, we are offering telework, and most counties do offer telework, um, very few are strictly telework.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for doing this.
So I appreciate the perspective on the outcomes. I think our goal is always to get people to utilize your services as a support system to get into the better place that we all want them to get to, uh, higher levels of independence, higher quality of life. I know that you mentioned Career Point. Uh, we are, uh, we have a couple supervisors on the North Bay Workforce Alliance. Set it backwards. Um, and I, I would definitely suggest, please let them know of any needs that maybe aren't part of the normal program that is available, that could be helpful for us, so we can maybe advocate for those things. Um, and I know that I just spoke to you earlier about the, um, what I'm working with, with Woodland Community College to try to get them to implement classes. I think the hard part is, because I agree, the personal touch makes so much of a difference. But then if we send them to school, 75% of all the classes are also virtual, and so you lose that personal touch where you're motivating somebody to get into that better place. Uh, but I, I think we can get there, I think we need to get there. Uh, two things on the random. Uh, you mentioned daycare. Um, I know that Director Parsons is on the first five. At least, you went to your first meeting last time. Uh, definitely a hot topic when it comes to daycare, and, and how is it that we can keep providing more? If there's room in the ranch, maybe it could be a drop-in that can be helpful. That would be amazing.
Yes, I, uh, I have kicked that around. Um, it's not off the list, and in fact, we have thought about maybe using welfare-to-work participants to provide that service to others. So we're thinking about things.
Might be helpful for employees, might be helpful for those that come to the ranch. Uh, just, uh, I'm glad you're already kicking the idea around. Um, and then the other one was, we just had a conversation, I think you both were here for that during our DEI conversation. It'd be interesting to know, those who have the recidivism rate, those who fail to come to orientation, what does that demographic look like versus the general demographic that you're already dealing with and serving? Just to kind of identify, is there a greater loss in specific groups versus others?
That's a really good measure that wasn't in mind for this, but we do have the data, um, so I think we can pull it out.
We have, we have a good amount of data. What we don't have from the state are the tribal TANF numbers. They have an aligned program, but none of that is included in the data we received from the state. So I think that's an important piece, and I, I want to reach out to the tribes and see if we can't gather that data to see what those outcomes are as well. Um, because when we talk about the whole county, it needs to include everybody.
Right, because there's not just one agency doing the same type of service. Yeah, so those were my comments. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm glad the state's already signed off on it and looking forward to your, I think, two next report cards that you have coming that was on the calendar.
The progress report.
Yes, the progress reports.
I just had one comment, and I think I say it every year. Uh, the question would be, so we have the program, want to get them into these programs, get them in better jobs and opportunities. Is there any way to do an intern program where they can move right into Department of Social Services? And some of the, you know, if you have the right applicants and stuff like that, because it would be kind of training your own workforce type of thing. And I know I always bring that up, and I, I do sit on Workforce Alliance in North Bay, and it's that long-term success. You know, I think we've got some reports, there were some challenges there, like four quarters later, you know, are they still working? What's going on? Uh, but if we're getting them hired right onto the county, boy, we've got some inside information on what's going on, how successful they are, so.
Absolutely, we did have an OJT program several years ago before the pandemic. That, we had some issues with, um, the way the funding was structured, and participants have to be able to test, pass the background check to be placed in a position. And the way the state restructured it, we can't have training positions for, for ESE. That's their new OJT program, is Expanded Subsidized Employment. Um, it has to be placing somebody in an open position, just as if they are full-time. The idea being, they transition into full-time at the end of the six-month or 12-month training period. So we're working on bringing that back to Social Services in, in some aspect, because right now, we don't have that. We have an ESE program that we contract with Mendocino Private Industry Council in order to implement that, but that is funding that most likely is drying up with the new budget. So we, yeah, we're hoping we will continue to do that, and, but we will probably manage it in-house rather than have an outside entity contract.
So, long story short, yes, that's also on our radar. Um, some of our long-term employees actually came to us through the old OJT program, and they're still around, so we would love to bring them back.
And just to follow up on Supervisor Spauti's comment about reaching out to Bruce Wilson with the Workforce Alliance in North Bay. Just saw they're looking at a pilot program over in Mendocino, kind of an intern, where Workforce Alliance, we owe it dollars, Y-I-W-I-O-A, right? Am I saying it right? Yeah, so there's so many acronyms. But it is a new program they're talking about trying to roll out in Mendocino, and it's with all the government agency departments doing an internship where it's partially paid. So it was just presented last week, so maybe there's a conversation going to have, and we can model something after that, so, down the road.
All right, if there's nothing further, let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? When you came up for your presentation, we lost our public in the chamber. Uh, so nothing in the Zoom room, and we'll bring it back. Thank you very, very much. Uh, this is a five-year?
It's a five-year cycle.
And so at what point will we be, maybe annually through the workshop or things like that, just to kind of get an update on how things are going? The, the momentum towards meeting the new opportunities that you hope to meet with the changes that you've gotten approved by the state?
So we have a progress report due next year and one the year after, and then we start the cycle all over again. So the two progress reports, I'm sure, will be sent to you if not. You may have to sign off on it, that hasn't been decided yet at the state level. We do expect with the first two measures to have a, a quick change and see those rates improve. The last one being a long-term outcome, that may be years before we really see the numbers move up.
Looking forward to that. Thank you very much.
Not in further chair, I move to approve the CalWorks Outcome and Accountability Program, CalOR System Improvement Plan, SIP, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
With that done, just a quick housekeeping item. I did see a budget amount on the staff memo. I'm assuming this is not a budget item.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Ignore that. Yes, I, I was not going to mention that, it was too late at that point. So, so we're going to pick up the second 7.1. Uh, consideration of the following appointment to the Big Valley Advisory Council. Uh, from what I remember reading, there's obviously that we have four applications and one position open, and want to open it up for Supervisor Green and Supervisor Piska to, uh, discuss who they would like to see.
Yeah, so we had a resignation before the first meeting from, by our alternate. And so I would like to suggest that Rick White, Richard White, be appointed. Sort of fills a similar niche with the, um, with the seat that the previous person did. He's been really active with the Kelseyville Business Association for the long, for a long time. And I think he would be the perfect alternate.
Any other comments? Supervisor Green?
I'm just trying to refresh my memory on these. So this is, the category is public member, but serving as an alternate for the, uh, the, uh, the primary appointed public member. All right?
It's an alternate.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? Then let's open it up for the public. No one in the chamber? No hands in Zoom? Bringing it back to the board for action.
I move that we appoint Richard White for the Big Valley Advisory Committee as the alternate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. I believe the only thing left on our open session is our calendars. Did I miss anything else? Everyone else is saying, please, no. Uh, so let's go ahead and start with our calendars. Supervisor Green?
Well, I see a whole bunch of conflicts on Thursday, so I see COC and EMCC. We have budget hearings, so that's not going to work out real well. Looks like a, going to a Farm Bureau dinner on Saturday. Um, I don't have an agenda yet, but Scotch Valley Community Advisory Council should be meeting Monday. Uh, ooh, next Tuesday. I don't know how that time is going to work out, depending on our, oh, we won't be meeting the 25th. So just for those in the Lakeport area, Lakeport Fire Protection District is going to be having a workshop, not, not an action agenda meeting. Uh, but the main fire station in downtown Lakeport is definitely on its last legs, and I think the workshop is designed to gather community input on next steps for the fire district and where and how it should be headquartered. And that's about all I got.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, obviously, budget meetings the rest of this week. That's the big lift. We're off tomorrow, obviously, so, beginning Juneteenth. And as you know, there was an event, it was announced earlier, Mac, Middletown Art Center, has something going on down in Middletown. Uh, so if you have time, please join that. And I thank the art centers for putting that together. Uh, don't have the time right now. I'll get it to you. I think it's in the evening, I think it's about 5:00 o'clock. And then, um, kind of a clear calendar here for a while. I will be out of town for a few days next week, but back in town, I'll be around the 26th. Don't really have anything on the calendar. CEO, we won't be meeting with you until we get back here, and then all the way through the holiday weekend. So obviously, we'll have, most likely have some constituent meetings. I know there's some, one big project in South County that I would just want to make sure stays on track. And, um, other than that, that's it. Please do your part, be prepared, have a to-go bag. I just want to make that announcement. It is fire season, we are experiencing that. Um, I know it brings back trauma as soon as that smoke comes up. Probably all got calls yesterday, uh, just on what it is. So please be ready to go, pay attention to your surroundings, and be safe if you're going to be out there in the wilderness, so, that's it.
Thank you very much. We have a redo?
Can I backtrack real quick? Uh, I got contacted about APC LTA special meeting on Monday. I assume both of you are unavailable, correct?
Unavailable.
I'm unavailable too.
Okay, so I locked myself in, but I didn't want to step on your toes.
No, please step.
All right.
Thank you very much for being available.
Okay.
Supervisor Piska?
Um, yep, budget hearings Thursday. I've got Cuberry Councils. Hope I can make that, make it there by 6:30. We could maybe spread out till Friday a little bit more, so I can get to that meeting. And then Friday, budget hearings, and then I will be back here after the 4th.
We all hope we have higher hopes that we can be done by 6:30 on Thursday. Vice Chair Randall?
All right, real quick, I'll just go over last week. We had attended what was called the Shigam Days in Nice. It was on the shoreline. Robinson Ranch area held it, all of the departments were there, different agencies, US Fish and Wildlife, um, you know, California Fish and Wildlife, Water Resources Department, Water Resources, Lake County, you know, all of the different groups that deal with that were there. And, um, I'd like to say that I caught my first fish ever. It wasn't, it wasn't through a fishing pole or anything. They actually had a boat where you shock fish and put it in the middle, little cooler for them to study them, then throw them back in. So I was able to actually catch my first bass, pulled it out of the water, and I was like, it fell out of my hands when I tried to grab it, so it just shows you I'm a horrible fisherman. I wanted to say that in front of Scott, but I didn't want to extend that portion of it. But yeah, that was interesting, and it was really good to see kids involved to see that as well. Um, but that was that day, it was pretty successful. People enjoyed it and shared some information. Um, Clash Against Trash took place Saturday, and it had a lot of folks there. I, I seen the, uh, what they do is they line up the garbage, the garbage bins, and then they put them in the back of the garbage truck, smash them down, and they filled one truck and they switched out. So I'm waiting to hear the results of it. I know that I filled up four trailer loads to helping, helping folks in the community and just grabbing stuff, you know, you see on the side too as well. So just getting all that going, so it was pretty successful. I feel like, um, a lot of other folks were happy about it too. Um, so tomorrow, I actually am going to the RCRC meeting. We have the executive committee meeting, despite the fact that we have a holiday, so I'll be going to that. Um, of course, Thursday and Friday, we have budgets. Um, we'll be doing that. Um, let's see, 24th, we won't be, will we be having the meeting on Monday?
Only if you want.
Okay, only if we want. So the Pillsbury meeting, uh, we have a meeting with Calwild, is it? I think I'll be the one attending that, because you're, are you even in town Monday?
I, I don't think I will be. I thought that was Tuesday or Wednesday.
Um, I may be wrong. I have it on my calendar, it may have changed. I know that on Wednesday, there is the-
Oh, the one up in Lake Pillsbury, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 that's, that's this weekend, the 22nd, I think. But the other one is Monday, the 24th. Calwild on a public visioning process, they're meeting with us. Apparently it says, I don't know if it's a placeholder or not, it might be a placeholder. That may be why I have it. Um, then we have on the 26th, PG&E and Potter Valley Project meeting with PG&E. I think it's still a placeholder as well. Um, West Region Town Hall. Uh, let's see, and then we have LCR, LCRA, which I will probably be the one attending now, will you be here, no? Um, I might have to do it Zoom, but they'll be okay, right? Yeah. Um, let's, yeah, and then I'll just be doing, you know, the week of the holiday and whatnot, of course. I'm sure there's more going on, but I don't, um, I might be taking some time, because I never get to, so, I never do it. So, um, we'll see on that when it comes to the July 1st week. I know that we're talking about another initiative. We'll see if that falls through, but that would be on July 1st. We're looking at something, um, in these chambers. But again, waiting for the Congress- But again, waiting for the Congressman on that. Then back here on the 9th for our board meeting.
I forgot to report out-
Please.
That last Thursday, it feels like it was several weeks ago, but we had the big home hardening event, and it was really exciting. The California Wildfire Mitigation Program held their monthly board meeting at Riviera Heights, and we had all top brass from CalFire, including our state fire marshal and OES. And then we did a really amazing media event at the first home in the state to be completed. And then we had another advisory committee meeting after with Fire Safe Council from the state, RCRC, CSAC. So all of our friends were in town. So great to have them for a really good, positive day up in the Riviera Heights clubhouse, so they got the best views in the county. So it was very, very awesome. And the most important thing is, is that we have shown that we can deliver and we're capable of being innovative and that we're leaving behind the victimhood of poor Lake County, which is what I told them never to say to me again. So it was really awesome, and I think we showcased that we are, that we have a lot of potential to carry really important programs and initiatives forward.
Thank you for that. Is that it? I have on my calendar a day off to complete all of my defensible space, and, which looks good, it just needs to be finished. Then budget hearings all day on Thursday, which I want to hope that we will just be done at 5:00 PM and reconvene on Friday, since we have already two days set for that. And Friday, we'll be doing the same thing. There is a City of Clear Lake meeting that I will be going to the evening of Thursday, and I do need to meet with PEG on Friday towards the evening, and so hoping that we can finish that day before it's too late as well. On Saturday, I too will be going to the Farm Bureau Dinner. I'll be sitting at the Blue Zones table. We've been doing a lot of work together, and we wanted to support the Farm Bureau in that way. And after that, I will be MIA until we come back on to July 9th. And definitely enjoy and be safe during the 4th of July festivities. Make sure to, make sure to be firewise about what you do out there. And that is my report for this meeting. And our last item is closed session, 8.1, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. We will now go into closed session, and we will be coming out of closed session. All right, welcome back. We are back in open session and want to ask Vice Chair if there was any action taken on item 8.1.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is. I move to accept the resignation effective June 14, 2024, of Animal Care and Control Director Jonathan Armis.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Do we have one more to initiate the treatment, or is that not necessary? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.